Boring.
If they're just listening and not talking.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I like that before.
And they just like go on and on and on and talk.
I mean, I'm.
Oh, an audio. They have me muted anyway, so that I can't anything. It's gonna block again.
So the planning commission have made so it's kind of middle housing plus. Um, and we're going to try and work through that in a fairly methodical way. To understand where we have consensus as a council. Uh, where we still have more clarification work that needs to happen. Or where we don't have consensus and then what we're going to do about it as we go through the items that are. In planning ordinances, those have been across from the planning commission. The now the. We have been spending a fair amount of time talking about housing types and where we are required to have them, the changes that have been made there. That's been an interesting one because even after the planning commission finished. We did have additional law signed into order by Governor Kotek, which made some things planning commission delivered to us as optional. They they were no longer optional. They were now required. This has to do. With additional housing types that are now required in all all places in the city. So for those of you who've been following along, I know that has been a little confusing because. Not everybody sits around and waits to see what Governor Kotek has signed into law, but some things actually really important things for the state. Have been signed within the last month and that's reflected in the documents that we're using today. The other thing that's been um. Interesting and part of our discussion has been. The good thing confusion is exactly the word, but. People are having a challenging time in some cases trying to understand. How much of these requirements or how much of these principles are actually intended to make housing more affordable? And what um what would affordable mean in our community? So we've also spent time. Talking about the origin of um the housing laws and the changes that we're getting. The fact that it's intended to increase all types of housing. That's really the. The gist of it and it's not specifically in this these cases designed to specifically create. Housing at a certain price because all of this will still be driven by. The market and we've had a good example to compare that to contrasted, which is the. Example of the sixty units of housing apartments that are being built right now off the Kearney. Where you do have to be income qualified to rent those places. So this is not that kind of a situation. And there isn't regardless of how you feel about it, whether you think it's a good thing or not, there's nothing in here. That guarantees housing will be built at a certain price point. It's simply opening up the field to say more kinds of housing. Can be built in areas than were than was true in the past. So. This is a big topic and there's a lot of complexity to it. Some of it also was pretty simple and straightforward. And I don't didn't want to give a entire overview of it to begin with because we've been doing that. But I thought it would be good at least set the stage in a couple of points before we begin today. So I'm gonna. I'm gonna ask for some feedback from council um on. The presence of our planning commissioners that are here. So. One of the things that's come up more than well, at least a couple of times as we've gotten closer to this finish line is people have wanted to hear. Directly from a couple of our planning commissioners because in addition to Marcy, who's been doing a great deal of good work for the city as a consultant. And in addition to Leila and her normal excellent work as a city manager. The planning commission has been in a kind of unique position in terms of perspective on this because they've been working on this for months and months. And they have found fit to offer to us a recommendation that includes things that are required. And a lot of people have been learning about that because that was news to many people in the community. But they've also offered things that were not required and came as the result of a lot of discussion amongst the planning commission about. Why why we might want to have additional rules or changes in our setbacks? Why we might want to do things with the way. With the size of the house, we might want to put a limit on the size of the square footage. And there's a couple of proposals in play for that, the maximum square footage for first dwelling to be three thousand square feet. And in addition to that. Another method of limiting things or keeping things tighter, which is the floor area ratio measure. So I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe we should just kind of. Invite the commission, the two commissioners for here up, just talk through at a high level. For them, what was behind the uh additional requirements? And why they think they make sense for Mansonita based on the feedback they have received and. And we can then have some Q and A with them as council. And then we'll see where that takes us. And then if all goes well, then we can start to work on our. Where are we just.
I think that's.
Yeah, is that okay?
That's a great idea, I think.
Sorry.
I just think we or I, based on some of the questions we're gonna try to get some consensus on. May need more clarification from them or Leila. So I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Okay.
I'm good, yeah.
Okay. Right here. Now we have a planning commission meeting in here.
It just gets.
Were you sitting on?
Yes.
And Leila mentioned Marcy's online, so she's.
That's great. Is there any way we can see her or answer her?
She wants to be seen.
She's used to it.
So you know, um, and I should say we we've also received additional comments, uh, some letters as well as additional um. Commentary that we get individually from members of the community. So that's been great to continue to get that. And there were some examples that were sent in sent in the past week where people asked to be a part of the package. So those are all there for the. The public record as well. So um. I appreciate you guys showing up on short notice. We only asked you yesterday, so I'm really glad and actually real glad you could be here in person for this. So. And I know you have no routine worked out between the two of you about who does what here. So if I let's just start with a broad question though, and maybe you could. Maybe you could. Without reenacting a hundred hours worth of meetings, maybe you could take us through kind of the logic that took you. Through to these additional recommendations for us. And by additional, I mean things beyond the required types and the required changes. Fairness, sorry.
But fairness. Thanks for inviting me. Here and explain what the commission did because in all of the public discussion that pursues to be some confusion. Indiana, we did not actually do much anything. The we can have is all. In terms to types. In most of them, we did do quite a few for this community. Was it? Uh, been to Manhattan, I think this this world in two thousand and eighteen, but just to ensure the response to. Stay by housing shortage required all face cities. Twenty five thousand. To. Uh, change the resulting ordinance is to allow middle housing in. Uh. All areas. They didn't clarify what that meant or was the confusion. That that law to this bring out. That means you had to have a little house.
Can I ask you to speak up a little bit, Tom?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
It was then clear at the time when that meant you have had to have. In all parts of every areas residential use were just some in each. Um, in Indiana. Manson is in their base cities that didn't care for this. Until it did. Two thousand twenty three legislature amended that law to require that the. City until accounting regardless of size. To comply with the requirement it sits. Uh. So that's what set landing commission motion. They here to amend our statement to allow housing. And. He did for the most part with the law then required we changed the zoning ordinance to allow middle housing in. Uh. Duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters. Um. Throughout our residential areas. Um. The two additional things we did in our meetings is. We added another category of loan called quarter apartments. So cottage clusters defined by the law. As dwellings under nine thousand square feet. Array around common work. We added another category of well, which is basically college clusters. Attached instead of attached. For your partners, like college clusters that are attached. The other main change we make is response to that envy about. Where you got to do that is we make a conclusion that. The new two years of relation being from everywhere we see. We should. Uh. Allow them some in this community. So we made a kind of universal application of. Quarter thousand votes. Now. While we were media politician, we could in uh. And they amended the law again. They did so in a way that um. informs to what we did. So first of all, they changed the definition of products clusters to mean. Um. Dwellings under nine thousand square feet array around a common quarter. Detached or attached. So basically they expanded their definition to include what we will call a quarter. Uh, the other thing they did is that they changed where you have to have middle house to. Areas only for residential use to. Every block or the person in residential zone. Which means. You are every lock anywhere that is known for residential use, which is. All of what we're calling M H one, M H two, and most through. On any lot parcel in there, you have to allow all these types. But we allow. So that changed the law, which I didn't anticipate, but it corresponds to what we did. So. What I'm saying is that at the end of the day, we have not given anything. That you are not required by law. To do now this this new amendment of law took effect on July one uh that you have to comply with. January one.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven. So. My dear, your plagues, but. The common confusion that they said. Reading commission is gone far beyond whatever it was required. It is simply not true. At the end of the day. At least in terms of types of rocks, we are no farther than. Have to be. Really, we have to. As the legislation is making. Yes, I I make it tell. You know, Tom's right, they don't. Determine or both in the community as best as possible. And make sure that the housing will fit. Character and kind of scale of Mansonita. We did recommend some adjustments. Uh, one adjustment was to three yard setback. To a smaller set. And that's to allow more space to in the house. Uh, another adjustment was in the. Uh, moving to what's called on floor area ratio. Or F A R, which is kind of godly good speed for trying to control the mass development. And especially as middle house paid to some of the established neighbors. We felt it was not appropriate to have over scaled buildings with the. And even the ratio of point six five. So it's. Really is. Sixty hundred percent of area law is the maximum. It's very common. Any in my experience in order to control. So it's the first that I've ever. Now, another aspect of what we suggested. Once currently, I'm Mansonita lot can really build about five thousand square foot house. It's a box. Um, it beats the thing limited since that of random. We find pretty many of us see. It's sort of kind of point six. It's listed as suggestion. To live in size two structure to essentially. Square feet. Including. She's a point six five. Uh, and the reason for that is that fearful that as uh. Things progress and it was currently somewhat evident in the city. That someone could buy ten lots and build an almost ten thousand. Some existing code that would. Overshadow complex. Makes the reason. Suggestion that in our place. There isn't. You know, very rich house in the past that we essentially roll to. Be in my character, believe me. Be a digital element, uh, which is the discipline. Yeah. Despite the lead, it's really about uh. First mass, really that's done. They share this thing well. It's trying to. Imagine it will leave them. Worst must be to Jared. You want to provoke kind of character. It's even bricks.
Bricks. And, uh, not the. Uh, unfortunately, so to speak. So guidelines can be based upon. Our city model, kind of. Patients to. To make sure that, you know, based upon the state's representation. But what it's been, it's been a fitted man's in need and as best as possible. Uh, as an example. Per code would allow a fifty foot lot. A building.
Like fifty foot.
Yeah, fifty foot line.
Fifty foot wide.
Quite, uh, they think it's true. Uh, forty feet garage doors with no windows facing street. To match them three second blocks with that on the street. And what would be like? That good. Uh, older hurts the way I say it, it really didn't have hurt. You know, that's why it's a very casual kind of. Rage in terms of powerhouses that. So the design guidelines are ridiculous. Code was really created in the, you know, sixties. At some time, like fifty mile an hour speed limits. Rage and curve. Need just lower our. Pins, twine. It'll lag it a little bit instead of having fifty mile an hour. Cause I. You kind of want to have walkable. Name things that are focused on creating context that are, aren't made. So the point six five. Any lot. Be a, a small lot, fifteen hundred square feet or two thousand square feet. It's really urgent. How that has. Smaller ones. Tiny objects in front to. Prove walkability, eyes on the street. Then worst ones. And more like. They should. Thinking. Cities. Into the, well, well, the design guidelines are. Articulation. So that's very, that they exactly like. Very. My experience. Very minimal compared to many other jurisdictions. So they did prevent some. Well, there are. Uh, articulation, all street facades, since that's the best thought. What are people disparaging is that what that is true? You know, articulation, uh. Breaking elements of the design. So it's just not a favorite thing for thoughts. Uh, eyes on the street, these are things that you want to be. About my fifty percent. Style needs to be. To be. Uh, main entrance, main entrance based stream. Only garage facing street. Being the entrance. They need to. Street based sun, which are very minor elements to add in the flavor. And these are very modest. Design guidelines. It's really the change from that fifties model to the more the thicker. And, uh, promoting their. It's very. I think those are really. Changes that. And. Try to limit the ball, especially. See to standards. Make sure that the middle. Least as least string. It's people who are concerned. And what remains, so that's what we basically have. Even good, good, uh. It can already develop. Um. Plan for training us. Character. Walking the. Uh, sanity. Be walking streets. And, uh. And then they try to make sure that the scale, the. That's cool.
Thank you. So I wonder if, uh, counselors have questions.
I'm gonna say like to me.
So let's just take a pause.
Yeah.
So I have a question that, that, uh, well, to first a comment, um. Uh, you, you. The whole planning commission put a lot of time. Into this process, which I think we all really appreciate. But what, what I hear from the community and feel myself is that. The changes that you suggested will change the community. As a whole. I mean, these are pretty significant changes. We have a comprehensive plan. It is in the process of being completed as we speak. It will be completed by the end of next year. It will be a compilation of the community's desire to move forward. Why should we make changes that are? Not regulated? Now, why? Why is it not a good idea to wait until we get this comprehensive? Feeling from the plan from the community. That will certainly go up to the planning commission to, to emphasize. Why do it now?
Well, this change is happening. Even the year and a half, they're talking about comprehensive plan, which is a pretty. It's put in place, but what I hear in the six years that I've been, it's a lot of. Concern and consternation. Uh, and surprise about the pace of change that has been occurring in the public opinion. The, the community is, is growing. More peak income here. It's a popular place to set. For, for retirement, yeah. The change is proceeding, the pace, the price of housing is shallow. Uh. You know, it's been. This year's price of my own. I asked for my knowledge, uh, so. And I think all of those things concerning people now, they would like to see some of these things before. Before, before the horse is out of the line. Oh, so and, and the thing is, most of what. As I said at first. On the types of building side, we're doing what you have.
Right, we're not.
Some of the design stuff that, that. I'm a lawyer, but here's the. And I just talk about this design stuff. That's intending to keep. What we have now in place. Until maybe the comprehensive access will not use entirely different directions. What you have here now is. It's a village lot. We're not here, 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 or nonsense. And, and most of these changes. On the design side, to me, aren't intended to at least keep things this way. For now, for a period of time and maybe getting a comprehensive plan to decide. Yeah, we're still liking that one. Like the village, you know? We don't want this to be down. Uh, you know? Best for the best to be. Build big, huge. Oversized things. Uh. If comprehensive plan goes in that direction, it's just build what you want, wherever you want, as big as you want. However, you. Okay, fine. I don't think that's what you really now. In the eye at least. And that is changes now, if only to hold things in place until we decide we want.
I, I appreciate that answer, Tom. I'd be really interested from Bert. Uh, since you talked about the design issues that were really important. If you were to look. At the options that you presented to us and, and. Well, we could comment around, but if you were to look at the options and you could choose three. Options that really were critical. From a design standpoint. To have the consistency of the feel of Manzanita. What were those? What were those mean?
Well, I, I proposed a tourist standard, so the mission.
Oh, I remember.
So.
So you have three other choices.
Yeah.
I think the. Just to give flexibility. And not detain something. Particularly, I think that's a core. And also. Future Rangers be able to. Current carriage place. Pretty. So. So there's a many options, uh, for each of those items. You don't have to be. Exactly, exactly that. You need to do a few things to this rest straight. That's their. Team, uh, I believe that, in my view. Since. Just it's very, so. The house itself is present. In. And this is really, they have double fuss, they have that. You don't want this to be a stain. Place is like that. Snout houses, so really at term. But the snap house happens in many communities. And what that is is that you'll have a street of parages. And you have to commit to where's the front. You can't, and. So the, the, these guidelines are trying to. Keep the carriage. Man's a heat. Better responsible thing. And, and keep the bulk and standard. Man's. So. Are there three that I want? Uh, I'm going to want to give that to choose, thanks, this. Which is, that's what it's like.
Okay, thank you. I know we're not supposed to interrupt, but the people online texting us.
Can't hear.
They can't hear, yeah. I, I think you're just, so I think you're just, you're gonna have to speak up a little bit, and this is something that we'll remedy next.
First, well, one of the times is you raised it.
Time frame, so, so, hold on a minute.
Yes.
Now everybody should be able to hear you. Sorry.
So when you get back there where you can monitor it. Well, we have our two informal testers there. Just talk for a minute and let's just see if that's improved the case now.
Can I have my three choices?
Yeah.
Bert talked about some of the. But your pure design stuff, but the, the, the things that go along with. Middle housing, allowing more housing are stuff like the setback requirements and. Things of that nature and things in the. Reduction on off-street. Working. I mean. Those are the things that will enable that type of house, okay? If, if you want to have more. Middle housing or just housing in general. But you, you maintain strict requirements for off-street parking, okay? It isn't going to happen. I mean, that's, that's the reason the legislature is, is passed. Laws requiring cities around the state. To relax their parking requirements because. Those requirements are what communities use to block. More. And denser housing. Because you can't build it if you can't, if you have to put in parking.
I would just caution and say. Perhaps other communities have done that. I don't think that's the, I don't think you can attribute motive to that particular. Legislation here with the size of streets that we have and the, the way the, the town was designed. And I don't want to get into a debate with you. I just.
Not.
That's a judgment.
Not. Saying that about Manzanita, I, I view the different. I spent part of my time in Portland and some neighborhoods I know there. Do use it for that purpose. But in any event, if you want to more have more housing, it helps to decrease. The off-street parking. That'd be one of my. Design changes.
That was helpful. Thank you. Yeah, who'd like to go next?
Uh, yeah, so. So very glad that you, uh. Judge the changes that you're advocating. In terms of wanting to maintain that. Friendliness and the character and the walkability and the safety of the community, and ironically, that's pretty much the list of. Adjectives that people have been sharing with us in. Taking, uh, issue with some of the changes. They're afraid that some of the changes will. Impact adversely the character and walkability and, uh, safety of the community. So. So that's what I think the council is trying to reconcile. The fact that there are these divergent views. On whether the changes be, uh, positive or negative, uh, and granted, a lot of the changes are going to happen. Regardless, because we were locked in, we have to make certain changes. Um, for me, uh, I would say, at least in terms of. Folks that have been talking to me. Uh, the, the biggest areas of concern are. The parking issue, Tom, which you just talked about, uh. The, uh. Lot size issue, um. I'm not, you know, I, I want very much to defer to the expertise on the planning commission when it comes to things like. If they are in, in, in design requirements, but I do think it's important for us to understand. I mean. We're doing all this work. You did all that work primarily because of the model housing. Legislation. Um, model housing legislation, uh, excuse me, middle housing. Legislation. That does have specific design codes for middle housing, right? That were required.
Yeah, I think, uh, Marcy can probably address that best. She's the expert on the law, but, uh.
Right.
With that, uh.
So the, the planning commission proposal, as I understand it. Includes design standards that were required for middle housing. And design standards that you are suggesting for. All. Man's in the house.
Marcy, could you please speak to that?
Uh, sure, there's a, there are some limited. In the large city model code, design standards that can be applied to middle housing. It can also be applied to all housing. Um, including single dwellings and middle housing, but there's. Another option too, which is to have a. Uh, some additional standards and those would apply. To, they would have to apply to all housing. If you have additional standards, you can't apply them. To middle housing only and exempt single dwelling housing. There's actually another choice too, which is to not have any design standards at all.
So I, I don't know whether we're gonna drill down on specific topics with these phones, or do you want to do that? Comprehensive through the list?
Like to get a read from the council first and then we'll, we'll start to look through the list. You guys have got till ten o'clock tonight or so, you know? Okay, I know I don't.
It's too hot in Portland to go.
Okay, well, that's kind of, we'll, we'll take what we can get. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. Um, so I want to thank you both for coming. Um, we've received some letters, uh, as some of the other counselors have already referred to, and one of them specifically asked. That we have, uh, members of the planning commission come and talk about your vision. For what this is going to look like when all of this density. As in, in, in the way that you've proposed it to us. Um, so, you know, Tommy, you were talking about still a village feel. And yet. I'm still having a hard time getting my mind wrapped around. How it still has that village feel when we increase density. Can you talk to that? It, village is, in my view, mostly smaller dwellings. And we are in the middle housing, trying to increase the availability. Of smaller dwellings, um. When you lose the village feel, uh. I think of Gerhardt. Okay, and that's just a bunch of big houses on big lots. Some of them were too smaller. Okay, and that's just a bunch of big houses on big lots. Some of them were two smaller lots put together. The existing housing torn down. My grandfather had a house there. Small one many years ago. It's torn down and somebody builds something palatial. That's how you lose the village feel. I don't think you lose the village feel by creating the opportunity for smaller dwellings. To be built here. And in in terms of the the vision. I I don't really have one, so I'm not trying to steer Manzanita in any direction. The market is gonna take us or the market is gonna take us. Wh- wh- what we're just trying to do with this code is create the opportunity for people to build. More and different types of housing than they're permitted to do now. Um, if they want to. No one's get, no one's gonna make you on your lot that you have to build a fourplex. You can build a big house if you want. Within, you know, the size limitations, but you can build a single family home if you want. But if you want to build something smaller, if you want to build cart courtyard apartments, cottage clusters, something of that nature, you're giving. We're giving you the opportunity to do that, and I think this community. Will want those things. We 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 need them for. Affordable housing. That's one thing. Smaller dwellings are generally cheaper. If we want to attract. Be able to recruit in employees for city government, for the businesses here, so that we can open the restaurants full time. We want to have people able to work here. They need a place to live. And they need smaller places because smaller places are more affordable than bigger places. On top of that. This is a uh. In large part of retirement community. And as people age, they want something generally smaller. People want to downsize. I I my wife and I hope to retire here to our house, but our house has four terraces in the backyard. And three stairs on the inside. I can imagine a few years' time, we're not gonna be wanna go up and down the stairs. We're not gonna want that big yard. We're gonna wanna have someplace smaller. Wouldn't it be nice if there was available somewhere in the town? That we could then at our next stage in life, we could move to. Courtyard apartment. No big yard to maintain. Neighbors. To look out for you. To help out, bring in the groceries, do all sorts of things. I. Aside from affordability for workforce housing, I think there are people in this community with that would like the option of smaller dwellings. Um, so they can move into one. Uh, so. I. And that seems to me to be a village where we have people. Of all ages, all incomes. All races and stuff, and it's not just. A a city that has a bunch of big expensive houses. For the few people that can still afford it. That's not a village to me.
So. Bert, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I I. Right on with uh what Tom's saying and the village character, I think, is very important. And I would actually encourage through the uh. Comprehensive plan process is to look at even more. Uh, advanced design guidelines. And these are the very basic design guidelines, trying to promote walkability, scale, safety. Those kinds of things, and really it only applies to the front facade along the street. You know, or in a courtyard housing context facing a court and such. So. Uh, yeah, the reason I love Manzanita is some of its character and scale. Uh, you know, I hate seaside, excuse me seaside. Um, you know, I think uh what I'm seeing is that that change is happening. And without uh things in place to keep the bulk and scale of these buildings uh more in line with what we're used to. And the character more in line with what we're used to, we're gonna lose it. And so we uh comprehensive plan process will take a year and a half or two years, let's say. Uh, ordinances will follow another year maybe or later. So you're talking about a three-year window here where a lot of not-so-good stuff could happen. And if we're gonna wanna grow with grace, keep the village character, I think these are very important uh.
You know, the thing that I'm most concerned about isn't so much. A plan development taking place. As much as what happens on some of these, the variety of lots that are sprinkled. Uh, throughout the city, in the neighborhoods, all established neighborhoods already. Um, the infill house. And taking, you know, something that all all of a sudden used to be considered a single lot and turning it into four. Um, I don't know how that. Still. Works into my vision of a village.
Well, it produces smaller housing that's more in scale with what's uh uh you would think of as a village. The other advantage of uh smaller lots is ownership. And uh if you want to promote ownership for, you know, there's once again, no guarantee that any of these houses will be priced within reach. But a lot promotes ownership. Currently in Manzanita, if you have a duplex, you actually have to have a condominium. And you all know the challenges with condominiums in terms of insurance and other issues associated with condominium. So a townhouse uh in terms of promoting a middle housing is a very good example. Of common wall housing. Sitting on an individual lot that is not a condominium. Insurance, financing, all sorts of other things uh that are dramatically different between. A fee simple lot. And the condominium. So that's the reason you really want to have small lots.
There there's some middle housing present. Already on Cherry Street up on on the ridge. Um, and there are townhomes. What is that? First Street down? I mean. I walk past it all the time. I walked past it on the way here today. I didn't look at that and go, wow, this is changing the character of the neighborhood. I thought it fit in. Appropriately. Um. And. I think these things can too, but but you know, again, to circle back. You don't, you don't have any choice about that. If the law says you have, if there's a lot. Someone wants to turn it into a fourplex, they can. And once it's turned into a fourplex, then there is also requirement for. Partitioning it, turning into separate lots so that they can be sold off and people can have homeownership in it. That is permitted. Whatever anyone wants in this room or or doesn't want, it's whether it's gonna happen, I. I couldn't tell you. Uh. Probably, maybe not. Maybe maybe the prices here have gotten to the point where nobody is. That's just not feasible. At least allowing it.
You know, one of the things that I find engaging about what I see in building styles around town is. Um, the opportunity for diversity. Um, I look at my own home and if I tried to build that house now. Uh, I wouldn't be able to meet the design guidelines. Um, and yet I consider my house really unique and very Manzanita-ish. Um, so uh we've got a main entryway that's down a flight of stairs. Uh, that you have to go alongside the garage to get to. Um, and. So. Um. And then I look at, you know, what you're talking about, the people focus versus car focus. Um, and I know it's mandatory. We're gonna have street parking, but I'm imagining walking down the street, looking at nothing but cars. Um.
Or garage doors if you don't do something about that.
Yeah.
You know, the the thing about parking, which is it.
Sorry, I'm losing the thread here. Can we keep going? Thanks. Did you? And let's try and stay focused. It's good to, it's good to for today. To remind ourselves of what's required, but probably not to go too far down that path because it's required. So if we can stay focused. With these two gentlemen on the optional things that we have to decide on, that'd be great.
Fair enough, and I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Good. Brad, anything?
Um, I think mine are more some general comments. I believe my more specific questions will come as we go through the individual items. But I tried to keep in mind in looking at this, trying to make decisions that middle housing. The purpose of it was to increase housing housing types and density. And it's also protecting environmental. Outside of here, the forest and farmland, so it's not impeding on that. Um, to expand on Tom's comments. As the city continues to grow, regardless of this, it's gonna happen. The city's gonna grow, but as we age, as our population age. We're gonna need more services and we're gonna need more people to provide those. That means we need more housing. And 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 I agree, smaller house and a smaller lot would. Generally be more affordable. It doesn't mean that it necessarily would be. If you got a fifty by hundred lot versus. A twenty-five by fifty lot, that's. Simple math, quarter of the price. Um. An example that we saw in a letter was. Uh, there's a family that owns a lot with house and sort of a separate house that has a bedroom in. You can't currently. Technically live in that or have separate because you're not allowed to have a kitchen unless it's a duplex. And the sentiment of this person was when I retire, my sister wants to live in the house that's there. I want to be able to remodel this house, put a kitchen and live in it. And unless they were able to have a smaller lot. They couldn't do that. Then the design guidelines, I don't feel that they're that restrictive. They're more broad. They're saying things like you guys mentioned. So just having a garage door. My house, for example, we have a window at the top. It's a little storage area, but from the street. You don't see just a garage door, so I don't feel like someone's saying. It has to be this kind of window. It has to be this specific. I think, as you both mentioned, you try to make those guidelines more. Broad, so you have choices. So that's sort of where. My reasoning and. Research and thinking about this. Generally came from.
Any comment? Not required if you don't want to, but just any response?
No, I um. You know, it. The. The changes, if they. If followed, if they happen, you know, people start building. Middle housing, it will increase the density, but the goal here isn't density for the sake of density. It's because it will be a good thing for the community to have more housing options, and it will also have the subsidiary benefit that. The more people that are living here, uh, the fewer, there's less demand to to grow outside, to sprawl into the. Adjoining environments, um, which can be expensive too, to to build services out there. Um. So. But but we're not doing this just because. These these ideas weren't proposed just because people want more dense. Living arrangements. Um, it's because they want. They want more options for for places to live and and Manzanita. I think needs to have more than it does now. Um. You know, uh, two weeks ago, I was fishing in eastern Oregon and I stayed in a small town over there. It will remain nameless. Um. Lovely setting. Declining in population. It's gone down twenty-five percent in the last ten years because the lumber mill moved out of town. Okay, they don't have. A middle housing problem. They've got ample housing because there's nobody that wants to live there and people are leaving. Um. The town is not thriving. Manzanita seems to me to be thriving. People want to come here. People want to work here. People want to live here. We need to find a way to accommodate all of the variety of living options. Residences that they want for different types of people and and. The whole goal here is to provide those opportunities.
Thank you. So I'm gonna make a shift. Um, councillors have got. Couple of documents to work with. They were drawn from prior sessions that we've had. And one additional one that I'm did for this meeting today. So um. What I'd like to do is take us through the. The housing types comparison table. And the draft parking standards table to begin with. And then I'm going to switch to the one pager. The one point two pager uh that you got today that are the um. Additional uh additional report, excuse me, additional recommendations. Most of which are not required, which we've touched on quite a bit directly and indirectly in our conversation with the commissioners here today. So uh and then we'll see where we are with that. Four clocks. We'll see how far we get on that. And then we go to the zoning maps as the next thing. So the goal here would be, and it'll be a little more structured than we normally are up here. What I'd like to do is go. Item by item and ask if I can get um. A feel. We're not voting today. It's a work session, but get a feel. From uh all the councillors and myself and where we're landing on this and I. It's tempting and all these things to qualify. Kind of, but this and this, I'd like you, I'm gonna try and work to focus you to get to. Yes, no. I don't know. If we land on, I don't know, I'd like to ask you what it'll take to get you to to an answer. Which is a strict thing for me to do myself because I'm the one who has hardest time with this sometimes. So. Make sure I make sure I hold the same standard as we go through. Jerry, you're officially required to do that. Captain is the standard. So um, I would like to request, if it's not too much of an imposition, I'd like to request for you two guys just to stay right there. And then if we need a point, have a point of clarification. That Marcy can help with online. Leila can help with from her chair, or you two could help with them. We've got you right here and we can. Answer it right away as opposed to a follow-up. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna say one more thing because I'll be be too tired to say it in about an hour, but this um. This has been very helpful, but but I want to say it's helpful in the way that adding another layer to something helps you. So we couldn't have had the conversation. And the back and forth that we've had so far. With the planning commissioners, if we hadn't had all the sessions that led up to this. If we hadn't had the work sessions with Leila and with Marcy, if we hadn't ourselves. Going through a con- a really continuous education process of trying to understand this and learn it so that we could be comfortable voting. So I think this just represents another good. I don't know if I was making a cake, another good layer to fold in or something. You come up with your own analogy, but it's been really helpful. For my thinking um today, and I want to thank everybody for that. Okay, so we start with housing types comparison. And again. I'm gonna ask for every councillor, as well as our city manager and planning commissioners. Raise your hand properly. If I make a mistake, if I misunderstand something, if I'm still learning, I need to be corrected. So. All good there, I hope.
Actually, another document don't seem right.
Uh, no, this is a document and it, I guess it's available online. I will talk it through and we can. It was not. Okay, um. Could we quickly get some copies of that made for people here? Nancy, would that be possible? And just do this and could I? Have you do that while we start on the other thing? It's my. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, so. When it comes to the house, and we do have some extra, we do have a few extra of these. Up here was available online. If anybody does need one to follow, we've got them. Thank you, Nancy. So the housing type comparison table. Basically outlines, although we can make an adjustment to it based on what we talked about today, basically outlines everything that's required for us. So. Everything, uh, all the required types, the single family dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, duplex, triplex, quadplex. Townhouse, cottage cluster. But as I understand now from the conversation we had with uh commissioners. That cottage cluster has actually now been redefined and it now includes. And now it's become what was proposed as courtyard apartment. So we can. Sorry.
So that you, I I was just. Interested.
So that's dark green now instead of uh.
Well, what I what I heard and and perhaps planning commissioners or Marcy could check my assumption. What I heard that was what we had referred to as optional, a courtyard apartment. Is now actually in the the state redefinition of cottage cluster, that courtyard apartment has now effectively become cottage cluster and is required.
The the new law.
Yeah, the new.
Requires that, but it's in the process of taking effect. So I my understanding is that you have to com-. You have to comply with that by. You have to comply with that by January one. Twenty seven, so. At this moment, it's not not the same thing, but it will.
A moment, yeah.
But for our decision-making process, we should consider cottage cluster and courtyard apartment as one in the same.
Well, I would say it's gonna head that way and I don't see, uh, my opinion would be. Doesn't make sense for us to hold off on something that's going to be inevitable anyways, we should just go ahead and get it done. So the only two things that are actually optional for us are small apartment and. The mixed-use residential plus commercial in all zones. So let me poll, uh, let me poll council right now, so small apartment, starting with. Brad, would you say yes to that, no to that, or I don't know?
Yes.
Would say yes to that. Okay, Linda?
Yes.
I'm a no. Jerry?
Uh, I need, I I think almost all of these, I need to understand better the. Reference to. In the final column to exceeding the minimum lot requirement. So, you know, a- as above, where it says, uh, you know, in all zones with our single-family houses on five thousand square feet or. Or greater, well, that is easy to do, uh, but then in the planning commissions column, we refer to. Exceeding the minimum lot requirement, so I think that's particularly important. On a small part- apartment. Just sorry, this deepened the process.
No.
Not to understand what that means.
Specifics, the footnote number five, I'll clarify that for you.
Footnote number five simply tells me that I probably shouldn't worry about it because uh. It's a practical matter, it's not gonna happen, but that's.
Except on larger lots or lots that are combined, yeah.
I cannot just dismiss, uh, you know, concerns based on. The possibility that that may not happen, as you know, as we've heard, we're trying to avoid. Bad things from happening, so I just want to make sure, you know, it. Small apartments can be what, up from uh. Up to twelve units, you're talking about?
Is that the reference eight? Let's just clarify that, I'm not gonna answer it, because I'm. I don't want to go from memory.
That's it's not the number eight.
Yeah, so what is the, what is the number, what is the number of units that's considered the minimum for small apartments?
Driven by the lot size, so you know, planning commission approved a sixty-unit. Projects on a three-acre, four-acre site.
So if I, I guess what I need to know, simply put, is if I want to build a small apartment building with. Five units, up to twelve units, I think, whatever. How big a lot do I need, how big a lot do I need for a small apartment building, and I can't tell that.
And maybe Marcy can answer that, I will say though that any allowable type of Marcy can correct me if I'm wrong, but. Has to have clear and injected standards and a PUD process doesn't do that.
Um, we have a couple of things going on, go ahead, Marcy.
An apartment building, since it's allow housing type in each of the three proposed zones, it would be allowed on any lot size. It's just that it most likely won't fit. Um, it's subject to all of the. Building envelope standards that every other housing type is subject to, so if someone's kind of. A good designer and has the right lot size, they'll be able to build an apartment building, otherwise it won't fit. It's. That's all I'll say.
I think for, because of the uncertainty, I would rather say uh no than yes, uh, I I mean, I think one of the things we're all gonna get to learn. From this. Uh, development in Oregon housing is how the market reacts and how things really look in real time around the area. A lot of these things that about which I, there is no opportunity to say no to. We're gonna get proof, they're gonna come on the market, we're gonna see that, we're gonna be able to visualize it. I can't do it with uh courtyard apartments, maybe I can do it if it happens in one of our neighboring communities, so I I guess for now, I'm a no. I'm not, uh, you know, I. Excuse me, small apartments.
Yes, yes.
I I'm not, uh, I'm not philosophically opposed, I just don't. Have the uh. Certainty right now to endorse it with a party yes.
That's fine, yeah, Tom, where are you?
Um, so as far as small apartments are concerned, I, one of the things that. You you started cleaning yourself with with the law and you started, you know, trying to wrap your mind around that and. Then I started, you know, having to figure out about these design standards and the Jell-O molds. And one of the things that, and and I'm concerned about infill kinds of things. And what I think is the genius that Marcy has given us is is that with all of that combined. Here, I I would, I don't want to see a small apartment building go up in the M one or. M two districts. But I would be open to it in M three.
Which we can't do.
Why?
Well, excuse me, I answered that too quickly.
It's different than when, it would differ from what's recommended, but since it's not required. We could be flexible enough to say if you want to put up a small apartment in an area that's. Largely unimproved at this point, then I'm I'm open to that.
Okay, that's another wrinkle in how we look at this, um.
But that would be a no on the final column, because the final column is in all our zones.
Yeah.
And so I would be a no on that. But I could be open to it in the MH three.
Maybe let's just keep going then, okay. And then uh, we didn't spend too much time talking about uh mixed-use residential plus commercial. In all of the R zones.
I'd like a definition of mixed use. And does residential and commercial mean zones, or does it mean a unit that has residential and commercial purposes in one building?
It's so it's vertically integrated, so you usually have commercial on the ground floor and then residential.
Like the new building next to the one.
Yes, a lot of the buildings on Lina are mixed use.
So what we're familiar with already is what we have in our commercial district, right, which is the only place we have that now. Love, correct.
This could propose to allow in any zones a mixed commercial and residential.
Yes.
Also just caveat, the note, what is now currently the SRR. Would allow that by right now.
So MH.
It would be.
Be allows that now.
Yes.
So this would be the addition effectively to the SR one and SR two zones as they are laid out on the new map. So this would allow really an additional two zones in. In town, as in in terms of the new map, to mix. Residential and commercial, so we haven't, let's just see, let's just do a test and see where we are with that, Tom. And again, yes, no, or I don't know, and what can we do about I don't know?
Uh, MH three only.
So where it is allowed now, commercial and MH three, so you're saying no to all all zones, that's what.
Saying no to all zones.
Jerry?
No.
It was a what?
It was a no.
There's no, okay.
No?
I don't, I don't have enough information.
Okay, let's come back to that, Brad?
I would say no except in MH three and commercial zone.
Right, so that's a no. The no here effectively says it's allowed in the commercial zone. And the S R current SRR zone now MH three zone where they are allowed by right, so we can't take that back. So, okay, so Linda, let's come back to you then, is there anything we can do? Like right now to uh help you. You further along or get you more information, or what do you think?
Well, I, so my experience has been uh in larger cities like Portland. That the combination of mixed-use residential and commercial really works. And so I'm trying to figure out. In zone one and two. If it would make. A difference, I I. I can go with the consensus of, I it's not as strong, it's just.
Okay.
Yeah, I can go with that.
So a statement that Tom and it, Tom or I don't recall it. A suggestion that it be allowed in all zones.
Okay. Know where we are with it now, so that's.
Yeah.
Excellent, thanks. Okay. Okay, well, actually, actually, not so much oh oh in terms of our our decision-making, because. When we were in our last. I think it was our last meeting or meeting before that. We, I think narrowed down just to two places where we actually have a decision to make, because everything else is required by law. Okay, and so again, I'm looking for all eyes on this to make sure, correct in that. But what I had noted was our choices are basically where we have single-family at the top. It's currently re- currently two per unit are required. And the proposal is one per unit. In the draft. Wait a minute, I got that wrong. Two per unit, not regulated. One per unit proposed.
So difference, there is a difference in this, it's not.
But isn't it required, I mean, isn't that part of the?
So the state doesn't regulate that, our current. Regulations require two.
Okay.
And so the planning commission recommended one.
Okay.
So we have a choice here to stay with two per unit, again, this is only for single-family homes. Or reduce that to one per unit. And I'm gonna do this, does anybody need any clarification? Before we start to vote, does anybody need any clarification on that or have a question about that? Okay, then Brad, would you mind starting?
I would say that is a no, meaning we should currently still require two per unit.
Okay, Linda? In the same. Jerry?
Two per unit.
And Tom?
Two per unit.
Then the only other place for discussion is come down to single-family dwelling under five hundred square feet. Uh, the current requirement there is two per unit, the proposal in draft is zero. Per unit. And that's for any lot size meeting the minimum requirement for a dwelling of of five hundred square feet or under. Does anybody need clarification or have any questions they want to ask about that?
So the maximum number this city can require. Is one, is that right?
Yes, sorry, I I just talked about what's currently required. Thank you, Linda, see, that's what I was asking for, good job.
So we can only require one, but the proposed.
Zero.
Is zero, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I guess I need just clarification of what we're really talking about. Here, I mean, I know what a single-family house is, I know what five hundred square feet is, I don't see a lot of them. In town, I don't know what uh the minimum lot size would be for that small house. Uh, if we're trying to promote the the uh building of small single-family houses. Um, that's okay, um, and I would expect to have some accommodations uh in terms of parking for that, but I just. You know, we we've talked a lot about townhouses and triplexes and fourplexes, if this. Small house, the small single-family house, we didn't, haven't really had a lot of discussion, I don't think, and so I guess I'm. Trying to understand what. What the planning commission is talking about in that regard, you. Are there? Houses like that around town that I'm not seeing, and if not, is that the plan to? Promote the building of them, and if so, on what size lot?
Well, depending on what the final decision about lot size is. The planning commission's. Recommendation, I guess, was since there was uh. Uh, potential for four units on a five thousand square foot lot, that the twelve fifty was a reasonable. Yes, right, so twelve fifty and times point six five.
The floor area ratio?
Yes.
You're doing?
So, okay, okay, maybe I get, so a single-family dwelling.
Eight hundred square feet, ultimately on a twelve hundred and fifty square foot lot is as big as you. Would be allowed if you move forward with the point six five, so five five hundred square feet is a pretty tiny house. And that would be a pretty affordable house.
You're talking about a freestanding house, if somebody owns a. Small lot in fee simple?
Yes.
Yes.
Just. For a lot of our discussions, it feels like we've been talking about the only real exception lot size-wise. To what we're used to in town is townhouses. And then the discussion has been, is it twelve fifty or is it fifteen hundred? But uh, it's actually a much broader station of town.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Marcy, David, you win.
Sorry. Should I say something?
Leila, do you want to lead or Marcy or Marcy? Marcy and all, check in, thank you.
The uh, the idea here was that units like what were just approved in the cottage cluster. That came through as a PUD, those are very small units. There's clustered parking for those, but. Um, in the event that you pass this, it might mean that. There could be clustered parking, but not a parking spot for every single dwelling would be required. Um, I think you could also see. Courtyard apartments or cottage clusters that are this size where you wouldn't have to provide a parking space and. I would point to classic cottages as an example of a size, of that size of a unit. There are units that small in that development.
I think the difference in visualizing is is that's a planned unit. I know technically by state law, it's not a planned unit development, but it's. It is a planned unit development, it's not technically a cottage cluster, but the idea there. And the and the group parking lots that are available is different than picturing individual. Small houses on streets with no, nothing but street parking available for them. That to me is a different concept and a different thing than a shared parking area, even if maybe you don't have as many. Parking spots as you do units, that's a different animal than. Than what I'm picturing with this, which is where they're individually, just they. They're on, well, we haven't gotten to lot size yet, but when we get to that, they're on. Smaller lots are available, will be available than are available now, and small houses like these could come up, so. Not thinking about groups of things so much, but just individual lots where this could happen, we'd be. Proposing to say that. That we'd be preferring to say that that land be used for. Whatever housing could be built there and not require a parking place, which would make it less likely to be able to build it on a small. In a bag even remotely close there.
I think probably, you know, the market's gonna tell you it's gonna happen, and we'll depend on lot size. But, you know, parking is the best affordable house. Uh, very complicated, I'm starting to roll that concept. They think here was to say was small lot, someone to build a house in a fourteen. In every other category here would be a lot space. Square feet, space.
Just to provide another complexity here is that, wish, if we approve, I think the right word was pocket parking.
Yes.
I would approve that versus this, because with pocket parking, any of these should be able to have a parking space, at least one.
Okay. Leila, did you want to add anything to the discussion note, okay? Sorry, Marcy, go ahead, did you say?
Uh, that we did a three D model, it was included in an earlier discussion material. That we had with you, a work session with you and planning commission too, um. Say, just picture the end lot of a block where we might have. Um, a long face, it's at the end of a block and it's a five thousand square foot lot with three sides basically. That we could fit four townhouses on that, but you could only fit two. Um, pocket, par- parking pockets on it, so if you made two of the townhouses. Twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square feet in. twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square feet inside, and you made two of the townhouses five hundred square feet, you know, a small house for somebody to own, you would not have to provide parking for all four of those, which would actually be impossible to do on the site. It's ju- it, it was intended to provide another creative option for small ownership housing.
It's just not logical to me if you have a five hundred square foot townhouse or house. Then I build a house with a five hundred square foot footprint and put a second story. Now that's a thousand foot. Why would the thousand foot one be the parking space in the five hundred? Not. Yes, technically the thousand foot would house more people, meaning there's probably more cars, but it's just not sinking in for me.
Can I take a read on this one? Let's throw it down here. This is Tom.
Okay, um, so the required amount is one per unit. Um, that's my thinking. We, we, we're dealing with, you know, all these different lawful goals, you know, and try, trying to create a dwelling unit that's proper sized. Somebody can afford to live in it. If you're living, you can't live in this rural community without. Um, you know, it, it, it's great to, to have the objective of, of making housing more available and getting people out of their cars. But I still have to deal with the reality that you need it. You gotta go get your groceries. You gotta, you know, go to your medical, what is hurt here in town. Um, and people leave cars to do that. We don't have like transportation, so one.
Okay, so that's a no. Jerry?
Uh, I'm going to say one with a caveat, and that is that like a lot of this stuff, obviously, it's a puzzle. And we're taking it a piece at a time, which makes sense. Otherwise we'd never get to the end. Um, but when the puzzle comes together at the end, uh, it may be easier for me to understand better this particular line item, in which case I could see myself being comfortable with the zero per unit. But for now, I, I'm going to say one and watch the puzzle come together.
Okay. You have the right to revise. As we all do, I'm a, I'm a no on that as well. So one, Linda? Brad?
No.
And I would like to keep in mind case what you're hearing is no, is that there are an awful lot of yeses on this page as well, which I think is part of it. Most counselors have in their mind as they're thinking about the votes right now. So I'm going to go next to, well, hang on. Let's look at this and say, do we have enough consensus today to give staff their direction on changes that would be made? Because that's the next stage of work before it comes back to this and then goes to legal again, or it goes to legal for review. So on the small apartments. We're more, we're more no than yes. It's three, two. So Brad and Linda were in favor of that. We had the zone discussion. I'm not going to repeat that. So do you feel like we, we, and we're not going to do it right this minute, but do you feel like we need to have more work on that? Because this is not like a three, two vote kind of thing. It's just, could you get there? Do you, or do you, and truly, if you feel strongly about it, now's the time to just.
I keep it, I keep thinking.
Okay.
Agree.
Okay, so we're going to say on that, that's direction to, uh, that's direction to staff to remove this small apartment. And then mixed use residential commission is out of the picture. And then, uh, the two options on parking, single family. You will remain at two per unit.
Correct.
Or the single family dwelling under five hundred square feet, although some things might shift as we get into the rest of the items, we're we're pri- we're universally no, almost universally no on that one. So we're at one per unit. Rather than a recommend- a recommended zero. Okay.
That's a good one for a comprehensive plan.
Pardon me?
That's a good one for the comprehensive plan team, in my opinion.
Okay, so I'm going to go to the topics review document. To separate. And all right. So same caveat, if anything doesn't pass muster, or I've misinterpreted something doing this, let me know. So, um, okay, so this, these show up in different presentations, but this is basically distilling a lot of things that came from a May presentation that the cat planning commission used. So here we go. The first thing we have is a develop, excuse me, is permitting a smaller minimum lot size of twelve hundred and fifty square feet for townhouses and, um, it's not noted on here, but fifteen hundred square feet is the requirement. Let's just go through these and make sure they make sense to everybody. Um, so that's the first thing, permitting a smaller minimum lot size of twelve hundred and fifteen square foot for townhouses. That goes above and beyond the fifteen hundred square feet that were required. There's a second item, which is permit a smaller minimum lot size for all other housing types. And again, the same amount was recommended. The third item is to reduce the front setback to ten feet from its current twenty. Fourth item has to do with Jell-O molds. For those of you who've been following, uh, the side yard height plane. There's no change on the front half of the lot proposed, but on the back half of the lot, there's some restriction. We can talk about that when we come back. The fifth is to establish a floor area, not ration, pardon me, ratio uh, for all residential uses. The sixth is to establish a maximum cap square footage of three thousand square feet for the first building with a give back for additional dwelling units up to the maximum F A R allowed for the lot. Seventh is seven and eight are maintained. So I'm not going to require a long pause. Uh, commission basically said we want, and there was discussion about these things, uh, but they were decided in the end to maintain the current height limit of twenty eight point five feet and maintain the current rear yard setback of five. Okay, so I'd like to open with lot sizes. And here, first of all, the, yeah, yeah.
I'm still trying to get a hand on this because I've been studying the new law, which is passed out and commissioned to this group.
Okay.
And Marcy checked, right for me on this. But the law requires that you allow four plexes on a lot. We have five thousand square foot lots now. So a four plex, you have it can all be code fifty. The law also requires partitions, so that after you create a four plex, you can partition those four lots. She didn't believe it. If I'm reading that correctly, we would have to allow both it is minimum lots.
So I want to clarify, is that a result of the governor's most recent orders? Because most of the towns up and down from us have gone with the model code, which was fifteen hundred.
Okay.
So if I'm missing something, I would like to know.
But in the third day, just, just until I want.
Uh huh.
That's what I'm looking. And it's the one that requires that you allow four plexes in any block. And then it goes on that it has the middle house partition requirements that you have to allow partition for middle house as you created, so. So what you're saying is that the minimum lot size fifteen hundred has become surplusage because of this language about quiet being green. Yeah, and that is, it's difficult to break the, I, I, Marcy told us through her presentations, there's a lot that's needed, there's smaller.
Yes, so.
But I don't think the requirements to allow four dwellings on any lots. So if someone owns a thousand square foot lot today, which I don't know if they do, you wouldn't be allowed to put four dwellings in that.
I think it's based on the minimum required lot size. We require five thousands. Maybe Mercy can chime in here. Mercy. So your, your, your point's been raised, and I think we understand it as.
I mentioned with Marcy's statement, it's asked this, they had a study.
Believe me, we know what it feels to feel that way.
Yes, we have the legislation.
Yes, people require a four plex be allowed on every block or parcel in the residential system. So in every block, you have, in the residences, you have to allow a four plex. And then there's a further provision, a lot of requires efficient. To those two floors, so the way I'm understanding that is that once you allow the four plex, then you have to allow it by its four lots. Also, it's.
So let me, let me pause here just for a second. So Leila, let's take your point. If we're into an area where if we are into an area where we've got additional changes that are going to go into effect in about a year and a half. And we weren't aware of that, at least as this was developed. Then we also have an option to say, put that to the side. And let's, I don't want to rush through what current state law is now, based on the fact that we haven't spent time on it. So if we can get a I'd like to get your assessment and I'd like to get Marcy's assessment, but we also have the option to say, let's spend some more time on that particular one, and we're just going to have to pause on that while we work on the others. So what do you think?
Um, I'd like Marcy to clarify and confirm Tom's assessment, which I believe is correct. And then if the answer is that is correct, my recommendation to he would be do it now, because it's clear. And having to go through this process again, I don't think would be efficient or in the best interest.
No, it would not be efficient. It's frustrating to sit here and understand the thinking that I'll speak for myself that I put into is now not relevant, and I'm just learning about it now.
I, I feel you.
I know, I know, but that's where I'm coming from.
Yes, so maybe Marcy can clarify. I feel frustrated. Hello. I feel frustrated too, because we're, we're getting current interpretation as we speak from D L C D and Hapo. Uh, they, they are very responsive in providing information, but it is still changing. And I have to say that while the, what Tom is saying is correct, all the housing types are going to be required on all the lot sizes. So this lot size rule that came through in twenty nineteen is obsolete, will become obsolete. Um, regarding the townhouse lot size, though, they're still trying to figure that out. They still have to write the rules. They're working on a new model code for middle housing right now, based on twenty one thirty eight. So in terms of the, what the townhouse lot size will have to be, it, it's possible it won't remain at fifteen hundred. It will go smaller. On that one point, uh, we don't yet know.
We get to see here.
So. I think you want to face it in what you know today. And then we will be doing this again next year, which will affect our ability to do other things.
Yes, we're dependent on what the state has done for that. So it's nothing we can control and not our choice at all. So.
No, I just think it's a management of expectations in terms of what the city is capable of being able to do. And I think it probably is prudent if the rules are not written, that you utilize the rules that you have before you today.
Okay, let's, it brings to mind another option we have, but I don't raise it right now. Wait till we get through. And Brad, you go ahead.
Yeah, my, my assessment of this twelve fifty recommendation was the majority of lots are complying lots are five thousand square feet. So the reason twelve fifty was recommended, so you can cut that lot into four and allow four townhouses. Because if you talk about fifteen hundred feet, which is a requirement, you'd have to have a six thousand square foot lot.
That's.
So basically, if we went fifteen hundred, you'd be able to get three townhouses on a lot. And if we approved twelve, twelve fifty, we'd be able to get four on a lot. Is that a correct assessment of the recommendation? So that, that cleared it up in my mind. And now I, it's clear for me now that you've validated what I thought.
Okay, you want to start then?
I would say yes.
Yes to twelve fifty?
Four townhouses. And something else, when we get to zoning, this means four would be allowed in M H one or M H two.
Eight.
Plus the four, we were told the difference between M H one and M H two is M H one would only allow two connected townhouses, but M H two would allow four. It's changes that.
I don't think it does. Is that correct, Marcy? That restriction would still remain.
No, that restricts.
Something.
That only two in M H one, which is generally a four thousand or five thousand square foot lot predominant zone. The, uh, townhouses, only two are allowed to be attached to each other. That's the minimum for townhouses, but in the larger lots. So, sorry, Brad.
If we had a five thousand square foot lot in M H one, four townhouses would be allowed. Detached.
No, they would have to be detached from each other. You could have two and two. They have to be detached from each other and separated by the minimum, uh, spacing distance, which we've set at ten feet.
M H two would allow the four of them to be attached.
Correct.
Okay, clear.
Linda?
I'm so confused. My vote, as I did my analysis, is this was yes, so I'm going to stick with this.
Okay.
Just want to make a note, Josh is going to come monkey with the lights, but you can keep, you keep going.
Oh, are we off again?
Just, just from here. Yeah. Not later, but.
That's fine. So, um, I'm uncomfortable about this one. It wasn't clear already. I will state that. I, I don't, it's just, it's going to be state law. It's not going to be state law. They're working on the new model code. I mean, I'm just like, what do we do now versus later? Um, so I guess when in, when in doubt, I'm going to say no. I just, and it's, um, it's just kind of a function of where we're where we're at in this process and what we've got to do right now. So I'm a no. Jerry?
Uh, no for the same reasons.
And Tom?
Well, no for the same reasons, although I was prepared to say yes to M H three.
Okay. Not into the, uh, hang on. All right. So that's it. This is a, when I restate it, this is because this is a
potential thing, uh, complexity, which you stated very carefully. I will change my vote to no, because that is confusing. I was yes when I thought I understood. The decision I was making with the complexity and the changes, uh, I would, I will change my vote to no.
So the, the no vote on this is, you know, it's not as clearly stated here as I could have done, but it implies the fifteen hundred is a yes to fifteen hundred. That's just, which is in the model code, as we know it right now. Oh no, we just lost Mercy. See, don't give up on us. Oh, you, you disappeared for a second. I thought you'd gone out to get the latest edition of the new model code. We were going to have to use that too.
Believe me, I'm looking it up.
Humor is a great help when you're, you're working on things. So I, I mean it in a very kind way. Okay. So that's a no. Um, it's a yes to fifteen hundred square feet and a no to twelve fifty. Okay, and then the same question, smaller minimum lot sizes for other housing types. So this was also recommended at twelve fifty versus the model code of fifteen hundred. And it's the same situation. Me if I'm wrong, it's the same situation we were in in the prior where this in fact may be, the twelve fifty may in effect be required of us, but it's. Me if I'm wrong, it's the same situation we were in in the prior, where this in fact may be, the 1250 may in effect be required of us, but it's. A new legislation and it's not in place yet and people are still trying to figure it out. I know I probably grossly overstated that last thing, but is it, is it basically the same situation as the prior item? Or is there something, is there a different wrinkle to this?
This is not.
Clarify what the item we're discussing is.
Well, this is permit a smaller minimum lot size for other housing types. So basically all housing types. In addition to middle housing.
Right. So this would be similarly. Um, kind of up in the air, but this wasn't, this was an option to extend the minimum lot size that you're required to adopt for townhouses. To other housing types like cottages, which you are not required to do, but it was desired by the planning commission.
So this would mean we could have a minimum lot size of, if we approve this of 1250 for a single family. Or. Duplex or eccentric.
Yes.
Karen's Rest, that was just approved, had smaller ones.
And he basically asked for approval or parents on that. It wasn't.
It went through the PUD, which again isn't clear enough. This would allow it to be done in clearance of the same as.
Tom, we start with you.
Um. Yeah, no.
Okay. It was implied, Jerry, sorry, I didn't say it. I can't, I can say it out loud though, so that didn't really help you. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. No.
No.
You know. Okay. Okay, reducing the front setback to 10 feet from its current 20. From both the, at least one planning commission member spoke about this and the intent. Intent of it. Do counselors have any questions or anything they'd like to clarify on this? Shall we get a read on this? Okay, Brad?
No.
Linda?
Yeah.
You can be the odd person out sometimes. You know, you shouldn't even call it that. I mean, just.
Well, thank you very much.
You know what I mean though? I mean, it's like.
I have to, yes.
Okay. I'm a no.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, Tom?
And then, um, this is another area where, um, as a blanket, I'm a no to it. Though I'd be open to it in the MH3 areas, uh, because of some of the, the comments I heard from Brad about, you know, the. My neighbor could decide to go 10 feet forward with their lot and then. Create a, a completely different environment in my established neighborhood. So. I know unless it's just restricted to new developments and places where there's a lot of. Open space to create a new neighborhood altogether.
Okay, so we've got, um, slightly more no and a couple of yeses. My thinking on this one, it comes from two things, one of. Two things. One is, um. One is the, actually goes back to, and I guess this is where we can have different opinions about things. But one is the idea of pedestrian friendly neighborhoods and having clean line of sight and being, have things being visible. If I'm driving or walking or on a bike or. My eventual tricycle, which is my goal next year sometime. So I think the, the setback being that much closer to the street, um. It doesn't, it, I understand the logic of it and I understand. I understand why you want to push it to the street, but I, I say no for that reason. Cause I just don't, I don't think that's a good. Setup. But the other thing is sort of a practical one, um, and looking what the market, you know, will do, et cetera. And so, you know, I took a little drive around, which I do sometimes and. You know, virtually all of the new development, particularly the stuff that's gone in up on, I always say on the hill. But almost everything up there has got a garage that's either flush or just slightly, um, excuse me. Sorry, uh, my brain just kind of took a little curve there. I'm going to come back to myself there. It just, it. The 12, I'll just say it, the 20 foot setback just feels. To me, more like the. Atmosphere. We have today, which is open to and friendly to. People moving between things as opposed to the house itself. So I just like to try and explain my vote a little bit there. And I don't know if, uh, Linda or. Uh, Jerry, you want to say anything more about why you voted the way you did and whether you're, what's, what's behind it? Cause we're not, we don't have consensus on this one.
Yeah, I, I honestly, uh. Am deferring largely to the expertise, uh, in the diligence of the planning commission on, um, this and. You may not believe me because of some of my previous votes, although, okay, most of what you guys have proposed, we are. Both bodies are agreed that, uh. You got it right and you're going to go ahead with what's required under the law. This one is obviously, uh, optional. I think you guys spent a lot of time with it. You know better than I, uh. I'm sympathetic to the argument about, you know. Suddenly. Having your neighbors change the nature of your neighborhood, but I think as a general premise, I'm, I'm hoping that's not going to happen. And I presume that this is going to. Primarily, as Tom has pointed out, in often, this is primarily going to be something that we're going to see in undeveloped parts of town, uh. Take hold. The only thing I, I, the one thing though, I would say on. You know, fiddling with setbacks is, you know, we're all on both sides of every issue. Everybody agrees, we want to maintain what we have here. Well, what we have here happened without. A 10 foot setback, um. So I just, you know, I'm a little nervous about fiddling with. Fixing something that's not broken, but that said, uh, at least relatively speaking, I'm comfortable with this one.
Thanks. So, uh, Leila, I'm going to think through something out loud on this with you and get your feedback. So on this one, it's, it's not clear. Eventually, we're not doing it today. Eventually we will be voting. In which case, three of us or two of us and that will decide it. Um, is it possible to? What's your recommendation on how we take an item where we don't have consensus today? And we may need the, and may need to want to use the time for the public comment, et cetera, et cetera. So that we're using staff time wisely, um. Between now and when we get to a decision when we were actually voting, because this one's not as clear.
So you're saying you would want to take, you would want to take public comment before deliberating further? To see if you can reach consensus on this particular item?
Well, I'm trying, trying to say. Through the process we're doing today, we're giving you, you and Marcy, direction on what to keep the same or change. In the, in the right of both the code. So on this one. We are, we just went kind of strictly by the numbers. We would say. We would say, take this out, keep it at 20. But there's also a strong possibility, this is very close, so somebody could change their mind and we could be in actually the voting process on this and. Say. No, rather than yes, or yes, rather than no. It's, do you, do you want to just, you, is it better to then just? Leave it as it is right now. Don't make a change. Keep it in there as is, knowing that when we're in. When we're actually voting, this could be something that is voted differently than we're giving you direction on today.
Yeah. So my suggestion would be that, um. So what we would do is take the guidance that we get today, that there is consensus on, and we would amend the ordinance recommendation. The items that you don't have consensus on, I would say, like, see how many of those there are. Um, and depending on that, if there's just a couple. Then staff can proceed with updating the ordinance with the majority of the items. And then when you hold your public hearing, you're not going to be deciding, you know, article by article. You're going to be adopting the ordinance or no.
Okay.
And in that time, you could suggest. Amendments to the ordinance as you adopt. So that's what I'm saying. If there's just a couple. And you're comfortable with that, then we would just make the changes that we have and then. You may need to deliberate on those additional items.
Yeah.
If there's more than a couple, I would suggest you work it out in a work session and give staff direction on. All of it.
So in this particular situation, since it's three to two. You would go ahead and put it in as a, not changing the setback. And we would, if, if we felt strongly enough, we would ask for an amendment.
Yeah, then you would do that at the table. And then you would determine if, you know, vote no entirely on the ordinance itself because of that one piece?
So I guess what I'm asking is before we vote, uh, cause I, that. This seems really uncomfortable for me to have one thing. Kaiabosh the whole situation that we've spent hours on. But it, and this, I don't think it's going to happen in this particular one. It may happen on. But, but in this particular situation, right now, the vote of the council is that we keep the 20 foot setback. If there is enough concern. Either by Jerry or I or the community, and we really. To separate that out and have a vote on it. And amend the law. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah. So you can do that. We can absolutely amend it as you're deliberating the adoption of the ordinance and hold. That happens. That happens.
Okay.
Um, my suggestion would be though, if that list is long, I think you'd do yourselves a disservice by having. That if your goal is to reach consensus, which I think it is, um. So I think for staff, it would be helpful to get as clear directions as possible. And then for you all to be aware, if there's stuff sticking out there, I think it's your, it is your decision to determine whether or not you want to hold additional work sessions to hash it out.
Okay.
Or wait until we hear from the club and do it in a public setting, which is.
If yours is agreement on an item and we try to amend or deliberate that during the vote, ordinance. Do we say majority rules, if that's in or out, or we've also got the option to say, I'm going to say no to the whole thing because I don't like it.
You could.
I think we have both of those. So in my opinion. To prevent that, I think we need to do more work to come to a consensus.
Well, I think Leila's, um, advice about seeing how much of that we have is, is good and we're, we've still got a bit to go. So I want to do a time check and just see how people are now. It's a little before five. I think we've got. I don't know, another 30 minutes at least, maybe a little bit longer than that. Can people go a little bit longer?
Yeah.
Other than have another session?
Yes.
Okay.
Go take a moment to stand up.
Pardon me?
Can we take a moment?
Give us some breathing exercises?
No.
Yeah.
Stand up.
I think Nancy could do that though, you know?
Yeah. And so, all right, we'll keep going. All right. So yeah, please do. Thank you, Tom. So, thank you, Tom. It's just automatic. Thank you, Tom. Okay. So next is the side yard height planes. This is the, uh. Where there's no change on the front half of the lot and it, it is a bit more restrictive on the.
Jello mold.
We're half part of the jello mold discussion, meaning that it's favoring the house be. More to the front half of the lot and less in the back half of the lot without getting technically about it. Fair enough. Okay.
I add just a little commentary.
Right in?
So if. You end up keeping the 20 foot setback, I think Marcy mentioned this at a previous work session. You may want to make, we would probably recommend and then. Change to that jello mold so that you still maintain, um, with a larger box in the front. So it would reduce the back. Do you remember it was like?
Oh, so it would reduce the backyard?
Yes, if Marcy could probably do a better job explaining this than I can. We talked about, so there was like that sort of, right now you just have a big, that kind of button goes up. And so in terms of just sort of retaining some amount of bulk, you reduced the setback. 10 feet, that bulk is, is, is less, like 50%. Is the box and then the side yard plane is in the back. If you maintain the 20 yard, 20 foot setback, you might want to just increase that box. Because the, um. Side yard plane is predicated on the 10 foot setback, the 20 foot setback. So you lose 10 feet. Did I say that right?
Yeah, that's right. You take the boxier front part and push the entire thing back 10 feet. So you would be reducing the more sloped backyard area by 10 feet.
So you're kind of training on the step back or the backyards?
Clear.
It looks actually.
Okay, Brad, we'll start with you.
Uh, A and B both, yes.
Linda?
Strong yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And that makes note taking easier. Okay, uh, establish a floor area ratio for all residential uses. Anything need clarifying here? I, I think in terms of, um, terms of community feedback and what's been offered, I think five and six are closely related in terms of.
Yes.
They're closely related. So we'll just leave it at that for now. So, uh. Brad, do you want to start on five?
Yes.
Floor area ratio for all residential uses?
Yes.
Again, a strong yes.
Okay, I'm a no. Jerry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got consensus on that. So we'll accept that for staff. Next thing, item six, establish a max cap on square footage of 3,000 square feet for the first building. With a give back for additional dwelling units up to the maximum FAR, which is still in existence now, allowed for the lot. So does anybody need, uh. Clarity on this? Any comments to be made? Hey, Tom, do you want to start this one?
Yes. No.
I'm a no.
I'm a strong yes.
Yes.
Okay. We have a consensus. I have a pretty strong feeling about this one. So. We may have to come back to this.
Cause I, I also have a very strong feeling about, so.
That's great. This, this is why we're up here. It's why we are the people in these chairs. Okay, so that needs work. Needs to be hashed out. Okay, uh. Okay, anybody going to object to maintaining the current height limit or the current rear yard setback of five feet?
English language.
Yes.
There, okay. Parking, we're just four items here. Allowing multiple lots to share drive. And again, if there's been any change with the recent, um, legislation on any of these, Marcy, no. Okay. Okay, I wasn't being facetious. There's, there's been a lot to keep up with. So allow multiple lots to share drives.
That's required. We don't have a yes or no.
So thank you. That's, I had that in the note and I missed it. So we were required to allow multiple lots to share drives. So we're not voting on that. Thank you, Brad. Uh, two, three and four are not required. So let me call those out. Limit driveway widths to no, no more than 10 feet from the current 12. Permit driveways to be located three feet from a property, from side property line. That's for the current five. And in addition to a drive. And in addition to a driveway, permit a single parking space adjacent to the front property line in a parallel parking configuration. The parking pocket. It includes a minimum landscape requirement to buffer parking pockets from driveways, so there's some additional detail there. So coming back then to the um. Driveway widths first, so limiting driveway widths to no, sorry?
Clarification.
Sure, sure, right ahead.
When we speak about driveway, you're talking about a poured cement driveway. So if I had a garage. And I've got thirty feet of space, I could put gravel there and allow cars to park. What we're talking about is a. Poured cement driveway. Today it's allowed twelve feet. And we're trying to decide if we're reducing that to ten feet, is that correct?
I'm really glad you asked that because it's gravel driveways where I live and.
I.
Was it dependent or?
There's a gravel space, I would not consider that a driveway. I've just decided to landscape.
Deplexes?
Are specific to duplexes on site or?
No, they're, I think they're, I'll let Marcy chime in, but I think they're applicable to all things.
We haven't specified that the driveway has to be paved. We're just letting the driveway be what they, people currently use for their driveways, gravel or paved. We didn't specify a change in that aspect. Just in the width.
So my, my summary was correct. We're talking about a paved area of either twelve or ten feet.
No, it can be either, but hang on.
To say it's saying. Denim. Is ten feet, but there's not. Ooh, this is no more than.
It's currently twelve.
Maximum, yeah.
It's currently twelve and the suggestion is to reduce it to ten.
So this is the width.
Yes.
Limit the driveway widths. To no more than ten feet, so it is putting a maximum on it.
Now, there's a lot.
It's well, twelve. Okay, and I'm gonna, I know it's tempting, but we're, so do we need clarification on that? Is it?
No.
Okay.
I need to ask the planning, I, I don't understand this, why you would do this? What is the logic of that?
It, it's really to have more landscaping and less paving. Ten feet. Stake in new transportation. And. I have. That'd be, that's tiny.
But it's still not clear to me. You said paved, but then I said, no, it could be gravel.
It can be either.
What delineates? In my house, there's a front section that's larger than twelve feet. That I've decided to put gravel on. What delineates that from a driveway or like if we look at this building across the street? That whole paved area or that whole gravel area in front, is that a driveway? This is.
But.
But that's a house. We've got a giant gravel area, is that a driveway? Or do I have to delineate with? Little rocks or something to draw a driveway in the gravel area?
I think the point is that when you come in for an application, you have to show where your parking is onsite is going to be accommodated. And you would want to show. That you've dedicated a um, a portion of your gravel front for that uh head in parking space, or you've created room for a parking pocket.
So I couldn't decide I had a larger gravel area, not designated for parking, but I might park a car there if guests come.
Yeah, that would be an enforcement issue really, but not a um. You know, an issue of your application for a middle housing.
Well.
I'm sorry, I know it's, it's hard, I'd like to hear from everybody, but that's not the format today, so please.
Just one more question and, because we're going to get to the three foot. Side yard uh setback. To per- permit driveways to be located three feet from the side property line instead of five. Is that again, an issue of?
One more space.
Okay.
Space.
Okay.
Hmm. I think, you know, on the second one, the example, I, I think. With any of these, you can come up with specific unusual examples of where. It's not going to work like a large gravel space, so I. Cause as I'm thinking about this and thinking about it in terms of. Committing something new, because the example you just gave is problematic for the twelve foot too, right? It's such as ten or twelve, it's, it's problematic because if somebody does that in the front of a. Home and a lot of homes do that because gravel's a way to. Take care of water and you know, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Do you know right part, even on your property?
I don't know.
I mean.
I mean, this grass area, plenty of people pull into the grass and park there.
So I, so I. Preventing that from happening per se, it's just saying that.
But if I gravel that grass area, it's then a driveway. Doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Okay. So. Let's just try and see on this one. Yes?
It's limited width, it's not requiring, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's not something.
Now, the way this is written, it says it's currently twelve and we're making it ten, so it is limiting the width.
It's reducing, you know, it's reducing the maximum that you can do for a driveway.
If, if it might, so think of it.
You're telling me I can't have a gravel area bigger than ten or twelve feet?
Think of a portlet.
The driveway.
Sorry, sorry, Marcy, go ahead.
You could picture this uh rule in any other city, say, and, and say that you have grass instead of, you have a, a gravel drive that. You came in and showed the planning department, that was your driveway, that was how you were going to accommodate on-street parking, you got your approval for your middle housing. And the rest of your front yard is grass. There's really nothing in the planning, in the zoning that prevents you from parking on your grass. And people do, in fact, all over the place. Um, and that, that's an enforcement issue. But you could put gravel there, you could put grass there, you can still park on it. It's not what is intended by the zoning. Code, but it's not a zoning code issue. I mean, it's, it's not something that we can handle in the zoning code.
Yes, there are some people like myself, I don't want grass because I don't want to know it. That's why I put gravel across the.
Yeah, and it's in your, if it's in your front yard setback, the front yard setback. Is not intended to be used for parking. So you can landscape it, I've gravelled around my house. So dogs. So. That's where it does become an enforcement issue, is if people are parking on their grass or in their front yards, they're actually parking in the setback. And that's generally not allowed. So.
Everybody on my street parks on setback and the whole city does. Otherwise, they'd be in the middle of the road. This is, this is really not clear to me.
Sorry, sorry, Michael, just. Really, I mean.
Can I read them? It's one sentence. Each lawn with a front line of fifty feet minimum. Shall be allowed two. Twelve and a half foot wide driveways. Or one twenty-five. And then. You know, because I've done it recently, in. Right away details of how you're attached to the stream. The maximum you're allowed to tie into the stream is twenty-five feet. So.
Oh, you're right for lots.
Are we larger than? My question is, are we talking about reducing from twenty-five to ten? That's my first. Because.
As I could see having. A fifty foot wide gravel area. With a twelve foot space that you drive in and do this part versus having.
Most of the. Speaks flat lots and things. Uh, which is a twenty foot. This to. Twenty feet thing. Like. If the intent of this was to allow for. Two or three lots that were a lot size. The access just ten. And I think where she's committed, Brad. The. One of the circumstances others. Illustrate the intent. Lot to include. To.
Being her requirements twelve feet, can I build an eight foot wide driveway today?
Yes.
Yeah, it's quite interesting to get, I didn't remember. In very detail of our conversation, as many of us, but the thing, Jerry, for me. This, this is a limitation. On how, if you want to make it no limit. Do this, why is your lot, because you want to have cars to play, have a. The only thing I have concerns. Is that we don't acquire. The big chunk, because that will prohibit. Houses on this spot there, so I mean, as far as this. I remember, you have this, this person can see on this. It shouldn't be limited on how big. It should not be required.
Well. I would just add to that, so, so Mike is right, lots that are bigger than fifty feet wide allow for two twelve and a half foot, and it's twelve and a half feet. Driveways. The issue for us is. The um. Is the access from the right of way into. Um. Property, so we just dealt with this on parents' rest, right? The number of different cuts that have to be made in that road to allow cars to get into. That area, and so that's why you have typically a. A driveway width. Requirement where we have a limitation is because. You, you kind of want to avoid what Tom was just saying, so you have that maximum so as to prevent. Essentially a sea of driveways or parking.
Spaces. Existence connected to street. Right with where she connects to street.
And because we don't have sidewalks, things get muddled here.
Yeah, they do.
Uh.
So you're talking if there was a curb portal of our street, I'm allowed to cut twelve feet into the curb or ten feet into the curb for example.
Yes, but we don't have curbs.
You don't have curves, but if we had enacted like a storm system in place, right? That's where you're. That's where you're sort of, we call it the apron, you have to get a right-of-way permit in order to access your property from the right of way. So it does get muddled because we don't have sidewalks.
But technically, I could cut in a ten-foot driveway, not have a garage and have a. Giant gravel lot that I could park ten cars on.
Yeah, we were going to pass this lot in travel.
Okay, see if we can do a vote on this.
Yeah.
Or go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, because. Definitively, I think a driveway. Is an access. It's a method of ingress and egress to the designated parking spot. Be that a garage or pad or whatever it is. Uh, so for instance, if a person has a double garage. Then they need enough issues to get two cars in and out.
But you'd have to have. Twelve feet and a pad across the front of the garage where you drove in and did this to go one side of the garage? Drove this and did the other side. It couldn't be wide enough that two cars could drive into the garage at the same time.
At the same time.
Correct.
That's true. That's true, the way it is today too, it's just we're talking about two feet less.
Unless you have a larger than fifty foot. Lot.
If you had a hundred foot lot, you'd get two twelve foot driveways. Or one twenty-four foot, I think it was, or twenty-five foot.
You'd have one twenty-five.
But that's not how it is today, is it?
Well, you have to.
They have some pine ridge on, they've got a bunch of the whole garage. Wide enough driveways to be able to go in and out.
I can't speak to pine ridge, I wasn't here when that was permitted. So.
So would Mike's driveway be permitted?
If his lot is wider than fifty feet?
Yes.
It's.
Okay, if it's, that's what I said, if it's wider, it's fifty or wider.
Very. Okay, so the, the intent behind this. As I understand it, is to, is to just prefer more space for housing to be on. And create the opportunity for that by reducing. Reducing the driveway width from its current twelve feet. Of all its glorious exceptions, which may occur in newer parts of town, and um shifting that to ten.
Yeah.
So it's a question of how the space is dedicated, that's the spirit of it. So uh Brad, let's just try it.
No.
Okay, so I'm, I'm remembering Marcy's um. Designing and then.
Yes.
Yes. I'm on the fence at the moment, so let's keep going.
Just got to clarify, because.
Go ahead.
We had two different justifications, one, two, and three. One was to create more space for housing, one was to create more end skipping. So make sure you got. Two rationales clear, so.
Both can be true at the same time.
Both can create that.
There it is.
See, I guess maybe, you know, again, I wanted to. Fix what's not broken, if. If I have a lot in town and I'm intent to build uh. Middle housing, I'm going to have a small driveway. But if I have a town and I have no interest in building. You know what's the two foot difference? I don't know why, why there's a public interest in taking away. Two feet of driver. Uh, if I'm going to use the lot. Same family house, so I. I just uh. And I think that these are both uh. Limited uh. Attempts to. Develop policy to promote middle housing. Obviously, other parts of this puzzle are much more. Uh, significant attempts, so on this, these two little ones, we'll jump ahead, this first.
Give us a preview, go ahead.
First little one, I'm going to say no.
Okay, Tom?
Well, I'm, this one I'm going to say no also, especially since it's a no more than. At least uh developers uh need discretion to have a uh smaller driveway if that's what they prefer. Um, and we haven't talked at all about people that bring vehicles like our Pisan and. Need to uh use their driveway to plant their RV in. So that gets kind of skinny there, and I want to give them their opportunity to use those two feet.
So that's no, okay. I'm going to go no on that one. Okay, so we've got consensus on that one. The current twelve. Permit driveways to be located three feet from the side property line from the current five. Any clarifying questions, comments? Personal examples? All right, uh, Brad, go ahead.
No.
Okay. My notes are here. Okay, Linda?
I think it, I think it supports. The middle housing concept and allows for more. More options. To enable, yes.
Okay. I'm a yes on this one. Cherry?
Yeah, I'm just want to make sure I'm not terminally inconsistent. And he's giving a yes on this, despite what I said on number two, because. Obviously, if it's permitting uh the owner to have a skinnier sideline. It's because he or she may. In fact, want to develop more house property. But I mean, it does impact this here big um. Is. This is uh. This is in the weeds uh. Literally uh. So I will say yes without strong conviction.
Okay. Tom?
Well, I, I know this isn't necessarily the point for having. A lot of discussion around this, but I haven't heard the rationale for no vote. Um, I tend to want to be liberal and to permit this.
I'll give you my rationale. There's a driveway next to my bedroom on the side of the house, do you want a car driving by two feet closer to your driveway? To your bedroom?
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's not a me example, because I don't have a side drive, but I could imagine. If I have five feet from my bedroom window to a driveway and. If I have five feet from my bedroom window to a driveway and I have three, that's gonna sound different.
No, and I envision that as being a problem for uh. Housing that gets developed as infill housing. Um, but I just don't see that big of a difference in those two feet than I did in the two feet in the other.
So we did have somebody in one of the sessions talk about. Trying to do maintenance, getting ladders.
Yeah.
That's out of that.
Yeah, we did.
We did. That was part of the reasoning as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm a yes on this one.
So I think we have consensus on that. You're complete consensus, but close. Uh, parking pockets. So allowing parking pockets to be added to our. Parking choices in town. Um, this is basically the. Horizontal space that you use on your property. It's in the, oh gosh, in the setback or. In the setback. It's in the way. It's in the setback, yeah. Is there any further discussion people want to have on that one?
I do.
Go ahead.
People today currently park in the setback. So that's allowed. Public.
Yes.
So if we say we're gonna allow. Parking pockets, is this parking pocket dedicated to the property or is it still public access parking?
I was assuming it was dedicated to the property since it's on the main line.
Property, people are only supposed to park in the right of way. You know, your free or.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is, so if we have a twenty foot setback.
It wouldn't be within the setback.
But what's the right of way?
The right of way is depends on where you are, but it's usually about eight, ten feet in front. On the other side of pavement, if you have pavement on your property. It varies throughout the.
Okay, so this is one of the setback, clear.
Yeah.
But I, you raised a good point, because I. I think uh. A pocket uh, parallel parking spot in your setback. In effect, takes a, in, I don't know, it seems like in most cases, it's gonna take away. A otherwise available parking space, at least during the day, in the right of way.
No. So I think people in the setback, both park in your setback. When they really shouldn't be and never.
But if the, if the second, if the pocket part, parking spot is parallel to the. House, it's also parallel to the street.
Right.
Correct.
So wouldn't it be right next? Wouldn't it be right next to a chunk of right of way?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all right with me. But if we're putting more pressure on the right of way for uh, on-street parking. Uh, we better be careful about. You know, taking away uh, parking spaces in the right of way.
I think Marcy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the design standards would be that you would still be able to. On the right of way. Parallel and be able to drive out.
You could have a pocket spot and a right of way person parking. I could sign me a parallel.
Yeah.
That's something, it's like double parking, but uh, in the city, uh.
Well, but you're not in the city. You're here in our village.
If you, if you can, if you can pull it out.
Let me just, because I can remember a diagram, we don't have it in front of us, but I remember a diagram where it's just showing. Being able to go in to a parking place that's running parallel to the front of your house. And getting out of it, but the in, getting in and getting out does not preclude somebody from parking in this space here, which is, I think.
Is the landscaping, is that part of the division between?
There's required landscaping between parking pockets and there's a limit to the number of parking pockets on a lot. So there would be space for parallel parking on the street. Even if you had a parking pocket and a driveway on your lot, there's still space left over. Because of the dimensional standards that we built into this rule.
We're gonna get into the details of the landscaping to vote, but if we need to, we will. So um, let me start with Tom this time. So Tom, where are you on this?
Um. So I'm having a. Hard time understanding why um. This is an issue, um. I mean, so going forward. Uh, my understanding is, is that certainly in this kind of an instance, we're gonna be. Jealous, jealously guarding the right of way so that people understand that. Um, the right of way is for street parking. And, and so there's the part of me that wants to make it, you know, conditional that the. Right of way somehow ends up being a part of um. A developer's plan to make sure that we clear, that we have a clear understanding of where the right of way ends and the. Then the line, the lot line. Uh, ends. Um. And then you're talking about putting a parking, parking pocket into that uh, setback zone. Um. But the. Landscaping requirement isn't to buffer the, the. Right of way from the parking pocket, it's to buffer it from the driveway?
No, from the car that's parked in the right of way, chasing the. To the pocket part.
It's to keep you from having an entire front of your lot devoted to parking pockets. It limits the number of parking. Pockets that you can put on your lot. So you can't, your whole front setback can't be parking pockets after parking pockets. You are limited to a number.
Yeah.
On the width of your lot, and then you have to have landscaping in between them.
I think the confusion is people are parking in the setbacks and they shouldn't be. Today, that's why when you try to envision it, you're like, people already doing this, correct?
Well, that depends on what street you're thinking about, yeah. But we can't, we can't and shouldn't let that perfection on that prevent us and even putting a condition on that, that everybody understands that in the city to do this. Right? We can just say that. If we approve this and there are additional, additional. Hmm, concerns or things that come up as a result of confusion about where the. Where your property ends and what you, where you're allowed to park or not, then we have to deal with it. It's not a reason to. To me, it's not a reason to say yes or no. The point of this in my mind was to give somebody a different option for how they cite parking.
Right.
There only, if you're, if I'm building a new house on a new lot or a lot that's been cleared. And I'm required to have a spot. This gives me a different place to put it. If I don't want to create a garage, if I don't want to use space on the side for a driveway, it's, it's just another option.
And thinking along those lines, then I'd say yes.
Wasn't trying to uh.
No, I just, I'm in the.
Okay.
The right vision in my head of what that is.
Yeah, but this, this one's weird, because on the one hand, we're trying to get. I'm gonna get there, okay. It, this was.
Excuse me, I said yes.
I know, I know, I just. Think better of it, okay. Jerry?
Yes.
I'm a yes on this one. Linda? Okay, Brad?
Yes, anything to add additional off-street parking?
Okay, yes. Okay. Yeah, we're, we're getting there, so uh. Next couple of things, the next thing is, so we, we're doing this, so it's not really for us to vote on it, but one of the requirements. Is to incorporate clear and objective large city model code design for cottage clusters and townhouses. And the location of main entrance, but we're required to do that and that's.
Yes.
We're saying it has to be clear, so we're not gonna vote on that. Now, here's a uh. Interesting set of things, um, and Bert talked to this earlier. These are the Manzanita specific minimum level of design to be required. I mean, it includes. What you talked about facade articulation. I don't have the numbers for garage setback on here, can somebody remind me?
It wasn't this.
We already.
You have a fifty foot wide lot, you have to pick two of these items. If you have a. Hundred foot lot, you have to pick four items.
Yes.
Two per fifty feet.
Yeah, Marcy, oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Fifty feet. Marcy, could you walk through that?
Don't you want to do it, Bert? But I can, yes.
I'm hoping you can do it.
Um, yeah, sorry, let me pull it up.
In terms of the number of, uh, we have a sheet in front of us and it shows uh. Five items. Uh, facade articulation, garage setback, windows, eyes on the street, landscaping in clustered parking areas, pedestrian access and accessibility. Those are identified as the Manzanita specific minimum level of design to be required on every dwelling. And I, I believe that uh, the. Guidelines you proposed are different than what this list identifies.
Correct. Uh, we have some additional ones that have to do with transitional space. Detailed design.
We were saying deck as one of these and one of the doctor.
That's one of the options.
Um.
Okay, so, so, okay, so these are, we got more items to add to this list, the. So let's do that now, then. So in addition to the five. There are here, we've got something called transitional space.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't talked about that, so I don't know what that is, but we'll get to it. Are there others?
So this is just kind of complicated, um. But we have some that apply to cottage clusters. They're required to apply to cottage clusters. They have to do with. Pedestrian circulation in and around the common area. And off-street parking and getting landscaping into the shared parking areas, so. Think classic cottages, shared parking. What we did here was we applied those. To any housing that has a uh, shared. Parking area, so it could apply to this uh, attached cottage cluster of AKA courtyard apartment. Which we may be required, allowed to do, uh, it won't be an extra thing under twenty one thirty eight. Um, but we did it willingly here. We did it not because it was required, but because we wanted to. We are applying it not just. Clusters, but to any housing that has a cluster kind of a configuration.
And that's everything you've just said is applying to the item called transitional space. Correct, or is that true for every item we have on here?
No, um, so let me just go through the ones that are kind of extra. Transitional space is a new standard.
Okay.
It's new, not required. Um, pedestrian circulation and off-street shared parking are things that apply to cottage clusters, but we apply them to. Other housing that has internal shared courtyards also.
Okay. And then do eyes on the street. And facade articulation. Apply to all housing?
Yes, from one plex to the highest order of middle housing.
Okay.
If you remember one of the sessions, I gave the example of. Someone decided to build. Fifty feet of garage or fifty feet of house. You'd be staring at a blank wall of garage doors, so this would require.
Mm-hmm.
Put a window up there.
I also remember Brad.
A window here and a window here instead of just. Sign of the house or at least have two filters.
Hmm.
Um, Brad, you also provided an example at that time of, say, if you had, if you didn't have. Uh, entries facing the street, if you didn't have that requirement, you might have entries on an inside wall. Um, and blank wall facing the street. So there's.
Two, two structures with walls and you walked between them to inner houses. This would mean one of these would have to be on those blanks facing the street.
Okay. Is this one, we could just do in one. Bell swoop, that would be my recommendation.
I think so. Well, I'm not sure that you've articulated it. Properly, Catherine, to be required on every building. Um. And I think it's more to multiple. Um. Falling unit buildings.
Just to all of them?
Single fan, single unit.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's a little confusing, so let's just make sure we're clear, because when Marcy was talking a few minutes ago. Particularly about the transitional space.
Right.
That had to do with um, with the housing types that have shared parking areas, so that does not apply. To everything, or did I misunderstand you?
And yeah, can I explain what transitional space is about, because it's different?
Okay.
Than, yes, it is, it's for dwellings that are closer to the front setback than they normally might be, like ten feet. Um, rather than twenty feet. It's to make sure that there is some separation, some layering of landscaping. Um, either vertically or horizontally between the back of the sidewalk and the front door. So it is a totally new standard, but it's one that. I have used in a lot of settings where we're promoting the idea of housing that is closer to the back of the sidewalk.
Which we don't have, so that's where it's kind of harder to, for us to visualize it here. In not having sidewalks, so. So what was the feeling of the planning commission on this one then to? You have a strong feeling for it, or do you?
Oh, I, I, I would say that the recommendations that Marcy and her team made were appropriate if we're trying to keep. Manzanita. Manzanita. And without these in, in place. It's uh. Less likely that the character and scale. Of uh, our city will be more like the village. And this is just one additional tool. Uh, this set of design guidelines that helps in that.
So for an example, if we pretended this storage unit was a house. It doesn't have any of these, so we're looking at a garage door and.
You can build a house like that.
Yeah.
No.
So you could build a house like that. I would prefer to see one with a window or a deck landscaping.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm, I'm not against it.
I'm just trying to give, give examples, yeah.
Oh, great. So um, Tom, is there anything else we should get further clarification on before? Taking a vote and what I would say is. Intention will be to just say. These are the combination of things that the planning commission. Looked at and came up with to give people. To give people options, but also to make some requirements of, of making. Particularly the front of the house, just less than a blank, more than a blank wall, you know?
And the, and the understanding is. Right, two of these per fifty feet of front lot space you have.
So there's this, Marcy can explain, there's a specific detail that. Yeah, um, in these, this, you have.
Yeah.
In the. Or. Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'm having, I'm hearing everything that Bert is, Bert, you're saying. Can you just repeat that?
In the detail. There's a list of. In those.
Did you catch that, Marcy?
No, sorry.
He said there's a list of requirements. And that there are options within that list of requirements to meet those requirements. And the requirements one more time.
Almost all of these is a menu that you can choose from, so there are. There are many easy ways to meet it. You don't have to provide more than. Um, a certain number for a certain linear width of, of foot of facade.
Check in any confidence. To.
It's correct.
You just want to bring that up because he was so unfavorable. Yeah, so you did pare down from some of the things that might have gotten. Yeah. So we've got Tom as a yes, Jerry?
Okay. Okay.
Hey. This is, this is a yes for me, and I'm simply on this one, just deferring to. The, the time that went into this and the. The expertise that went into differentiating based on the type of house and situation, so I think that's uh. I think that's way above my pay grade, so I'm gonna, I'm trusting the planning commission's work on that, say yes. Linda?
I'm yes for the same reasons you just said.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we have a consensus on that. So the two items we have before we go to zoning, the two items we have. Uh, we might have some strong feeling, not feeling, opinion to work out is the three thousand square feet. Um. Requirement and then the reduced front setback, which may. May not have as much. Divergence, but has some. So, uh, okay. So. So. The zoning. And I'm mindful of time, so I want to, want to just start and see. How much work we have to do here or if we're. Clear, is if it's going to be a lot of discussion on it. I'm not sure, um, this is the time to continue, but if it's a shorter. Discussion based on all prior work, then you can tackle it. So basically, hopefully it's the latter, but if it's the former, then they're going to take the time. It's been the, it's been the guideline all around. So now we're back to the large handout where we're looking at the before and after maps for the. The names and the numbering for our, um, zoning. And what's proposed to be allowed. And basically, we're good, making language changes to, to shift to middle housing oriented language, middle housing one, middle housing two. And middle housing three, middle housing two used to be the more, um. Now I'm not going to do the comparisons now, so we're making those changes. And on here, and again, I'd like to know if.
Just ignore me.
Okay. What we have on the chart is what's proposed to be allowed and already. I can see we may have a challenge with townhouses because the. Lot size of fifteen hundred square feet or later is referred to here. So let me back up and just say, do counselors have? Like a general questions or concerns they'd want to express about the new zoning and what's proposed to be allowed? So we made a broad question first, Brad?
I just want to clarify that the difference between MH one, MH two, the only difference was. Four connected townhouses versus two sets of double connected townhouses.
Correct. Yeah.
And my question would be, why are we differentiating that between M two and M one?
So do we need that distinction given where state law is headed and, and why would that be?
Uh, the state law question, I can maybe kick that to Marcy, but I think the original intent of having two connected. Is based on the kind of historical lot size pattern in MH one, which represents the older part of the town and. One of the first things that Marcy did was site studies of the entire city. And that came out pretty clear that those lot sizes tended to be smaller than our minimum lot size of five thousand. So it was intended to keep. In scale with the rest of that here. You don't know about the. Question related to twenty-one thirty-eight? I don't think twenty-one thirty-eight is going to change the ability for, for towns to. Choose a different number of townhouses that can be connected. I think that will still remain a choice.
It is or it is not going to change that?
I don't believe it will. I think it will still be a choice on city's part to limit the number of townhouses that are. Uh, required to be attached for different areas for contextual reasons. I'm sorry, was that not clear? I'm just looking at people's facial expressions and thinking it's more explanation necessary.
Well, I think that the, the sort of common sense question would have been, maybe you've just answered it. If the only thing differentiating. MH one from MH two in terms of what's proposed to be allowed. Is how many townhouses been, can be created.
Connected.
Connected, excuse me. Well, you just said that's not going to change based on the new state laws. So there is a distinction, that's a difference, and that's the reason, and that's the difference. Between MH one and MH two and to, to roll in Leila's earlier comment. The reason, one of the reasons those. Zones were created the way they were is you were looking at in general what the lot sizes were in an MH one. And in, well, in MH one, they're generally smaller and they're somewhat larger in MH two. But everything that we've talked about in terms of what's allowed is specific to lot size. So if you're in, if I understand it right, if you're in the MH one and you have to have, and you. Have, happen to have a lot that's unusually large, it's not dependent on whether you're in MH one, it's what the lot size is. As to what you can develop there.
Well, the distinction would be, so yes, um, but you could only have two. So if you want, if you had a lot that was big enough. To accommodate. Four townhomes, they could not all four be connected. And it would be two and two.
Yeah. So that's the distinction really. It's not as much of a distinction as we used to have between like. The R, the R four.
Yeah.
The R two.
Yeah.
And the other thing then in MH three, that is set up separately because it is. It used to be our SRR zone and there are uses there that have to. That are allowed, that have to stay allowed and can't be changed. And that's a broader use than what we're allowing in MH one or MH two.
That's correct.
Okay, alright. So are there any questions or concerns that council would have about accepting the, the zones as they've been described?
I just, I have one question. So we refer throughout. This document to all zones, but all zones means all residential zones.
Yes, correct. Yeah, we're not talking about the commercial zone here. Thank you for clarifying that. Yes. Really?
I would. Rather see connectability and number of townhouses based on lot size than zone.
Well, that means you don't agree with this proposal.
Correct.
It's five forty-seven, we've been, I just want to make sure I'm there. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the zones as they're. Jerry?
Yes, I think we. Have not quite reached the simplicity that might have been shooting for.
Yeah.
I just, eh, I do. I thought I understood speech that what the commission is. Closing that all middle housing types appear in the commercials. To make the case.
It's yet again. I thought we were required to allow all housing types in the commercial zone.
Mercy, can you clarify that? Any lot that is residential zone, it's worth, or. The commercials of.
Is that Bert? I'm having a hard time hearing you, Bert. Um, do, Leila, do you mind paraphrasing that question? Is this about the commercial zones or are we still talking about the residential zones?
Yes, all housing types in all resident, all residential zones. The commercial zone currently allows residential and question, I think, of council is, does that mean all housing? Is in the commercial zone?
It does, yes.
Well, I'm going to ask you, uh, tell me what chapter one B twenty-five, the model code means. Which addresses specifically what the phrase zone for residential use means. Do you have the, do you have the model code in front of you?
So that kind of feels like a question just sort of dropped in. So do you want to give some context for it? Yeah.
Alright, sure.
Yeah, why you're asking and what the, what the connection is with what our discussions were.
Well, I, I think that, you know, the term zone for residential use is clearly defined. By the model code. And I think it excludes our commercial zone. So I just want to. Either be convinced otherwise or. Confirmed that that is the definition in the code.
Yes, um, so I did just to double check my work, because in preparation for this question. I sent a query to Hapo and DLCD and. I would just like to summarize what it says. It just came through. The other day. Okay, so in mixed-use areas, middle housing. There are three criteria that you have to meet for it to be a, a zone that allows, that is required to allow middle housing. It has to be defined in the comprehensive plan as a residential zone. And, and you do, you do define this zone as having commercial use and residential use. It also has to, um. Right, it has to be primarily residential zoning district based on purpose and allowed uses. And you do allow already residential uses in the zone. And it has to allow single-family detached as a permitted use. So all those three facts are true for your commercial zone. Therefore, it, it is a zone.
What was the middle one? What was the middle one?
There's no minimum, I didn't mention a minimum.
No, that's the second, the second, the second of the three you just went through.
And so the second was, it has to be primarily a residential zoning district based on purpose and allowed use of. Allowed uses. So the purpose statement does state that it's for residential uses in addition to commercial uses.
Do you think it's primarily for residential uses?
But I think she's saying it can be either or.
Yeah, in the purpose, in the purpose statement, it says it's for, for residential and commercial uses.
Marcy, is it? Interpretation. Former language for the normal language because the new law has changed it.
I don't know what the new law says about commercial.
Residential use is now becoming any lot or parcel in a residential zone. So the language has changed and I don't know. Which one you're interpreting.
Okay.
Residential zones, residential zones, and commercial zones, commercials.
But commercials do allow residential.
Yeah, we have residential use, we've had it, we have single-family, single-unit homes on Lenida. We, we haven't, so.
Right, but that doesn't mean it's a residential zone.
No, but Jerry's question isn't whether it's a residential zone. I think Jerry's question is just to confirm, do, are we required to. Allow all housing types in what is called our commercial zone, which actually is a combination of commercial and residences. And the answer I'm hearing from what Marcy has just said is yes.
That's how I'm.
If, if you'd like to, I can pull this email up and share it and we can read it together. It sounds like there's enough concern about in potential misinterpretation that that might be. Something you want.
I'm the only one with the concern. I would like to talk to the author of the email.
You, you would like me to pull up the email? Okay.
No, it sounds like I may be the only one with the concerns.
You raised it as a concern and now I just, you know. It's raised as a concern, but I realize I've been making an assumption and I'd like to know that that assumption is correct. My assumption in the commercial zone, which has not been part of our discussion, we've been focused on the, the residential only zones. My assumption in the commercial zone has been. In the past, we've had different housing types and people have lived and used homes on that street for a long time. And that by being required to allow all types of. All these new housing types, that that would apply for the commercial zone as well as the residential zone. So if I can get a solid that is true, then I'm comfortable voting on it. But if that's not the case, then I.
That is true. That is true and it's confirmed in this Hapo DLCD letter and to the whomever, I think it was Tom. Who was asking for clarification about twenty-one thirty-eight. It does reference twenty-one thirty-eight. So it's saying. Confirming that twenty-one thirty-eight also keeps this, this, uh, or maybe even extends. This requirement for middle housing in your commercial zone.
So what I'd like to suggest on this one, um, I don't want to, I'm not going to recommend we go through an email together with this stage in the proceedings. You're confident of it, Leila's confident of it, but I would like everybody to have a chance to look at it. So can you forward that on to, uh. Us and we will take a look at it. And if there's further questions or details we need to work out, we can, rather than doing it now and see Tom and then. For, for head.
So my question then is, if any of these housing types are eligible to be built in the commercial zone. And in the commercial zone, you don't have to be waiting list to get an STR license. Uh, conceivably, you can build a multi-unit. Building in the commercial zone and be immediately eligible for STR licenses.
Well, as long as it meets the conditions of town three. Which have parking requirements, ownerships awareness.
If you had a six-unit building all by one person, only one of those can be STR lot six. Those rules are the same in residential area.
They're regulated outside of the, the land use ordinance.
Could you bring it up? Cause usually has that question, so that's good.
Okay.
Okay, Bert, you want to say something?
Well, I just, uh, just maybe discuss by a few information levels, that the commercial zone really needs to be. And I think a, of your, it's a very small, very. And, uh, for it to be devoted to. Projects that don't have mixed-use nature to them. Think is law term nature side. So as you. Pertinences like it's required, it's the nature of the zone. But I would suggest that if you. Make sure that. Which makes you stand that.
Okay, good point. That's enough to crack in future time. Okay, alright. Okay, so Leila?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you, referring to his staff. Do you have enough information from the session tonight to go forward? With the exception of the additional conversation we need to have on the reduced front setback and the three thousand square foot.
Yeah, and unfortunately my computer died, so I don't have my list of things where there was a four one, but if I just get. Counsel to clarify, do you want staff? To go ahead and make those changes to the ordinance? Yes, okay, so the ones where there's four one, yes.
Yeah.
Ones that are three two, we will leave as is.
Yes, I think there are only two, there are just two.
Reduced front setback and the three thousand square foot.
And then would your plan then be to basically the next time you talk about, I'm sorry, my back is killing me. Um, would your plan be to. The next time you meet to discuss this, have it as a first reading in a public hearing? Or should we schedule another work session once? Um, Marcy has had a chance to have, has had a chance to update the ordinance language. I guess procedural, I want to, what you guys want to suggest.
Well, what makes sense based on timing?
Pretty big issues, yeah.
I think what I, can I offer a recommendation? Marcy can. Tell me yes or no, but I think staff should proceed with everything but those two items.
Yeah.
Right, there's a lot we can do, that's quite, that's sort of the meat of it, the meat and potatoes. And then I will confer with Marcy to see if we will have that ready. It won't be legally reviewed or gone to DLCD. But I think. Marcy, do you think it's, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but, um. Do you think it's conceivable to have a draft for the next work session, which would be September night? Yeah, conceivable. So we'll get it as far as we can.
Okay.
And then share that with you.
So then would you recommend that we use the nine-nine work session to also then hit the two things that are unresolved? So we'll do both.
Yeah, and then what we can do is send off at least those changes for review. Um, let you deliberate further on that, then ideally the package that we bring you, um. When you're ready for first reading, the materials are ready for first reading. Will be as complete as they can be, subject to any other changes you may. Side, I want to say too procedurally, I just want to start getting it out there into the world that my recommendation would be to repeal ninety-five-five and just replace it. With this new. There's so many changes in it at this point. I'm going to recommend that for the land division as well. Uh, but I think we just repeal and replace, yeah. So I think that makes the most sense, and then I think based on that, you are able to reach consensus in September.
I will.
I I don't presume anything there. That I think you would likely have a first reading in, you know. Just giving us enough time to fine tune everything, get it to D L C D, get it to legal, and then have that ordinance all cleaned up, so what you'll see is just a clean, brand new ordinance, you won't see the red line strike out.
That's great. So did we actually vote on this?
Yeah.
We did.
Oh, did everyone vote?
I haven't.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brad, no, Linda, yes, Catherine, yes, Jerry, yes. And Miss Tom.
To which one did?
Just the map. The map, as it is.
Well, I.
Except for.
Looking at the very clear plain language of code, uh definition of zone for residential use. I need to be convinced that I'm reading it wrong. It could be, but perhaps I am, and on that issue alone, I'm gonna hold out because we're putting a lot of cars on the street anyway you look at it, we already have cars on the street, the commercials, I don't see any reason to care to that. And that's, I think uh you suggested we should treat our commercial zone as a commercial zone, the greatest extent we can. And, you know, if we really are gonna be welcoming in new uh residents, let them enjoy the residential districts where we don't want. Let's force them to, you know, live on the. So I I don't know, maybe we're only talking about one or two projects tops in that zone, but I don't see this.
So you're no.
No, I'm not.
This is.
Just no on the, wanna be using the term all zones to include the.
And I I'm of the same mind as Jerry.
All we're asking is consolidation of the currently residential zones. I think you're asking for additional clarification on the applicability of the middle housing types to the commercial district.
Correct.
Those are separate things, so as it relates to the consolidation of the residential zones, what's your feeling on that? Cause I'm marketing these guests, my computer's dead, so.
Yeah, we had, we were else. So, so we've got. Okay, so do we um hang on before everybody's packed and run it out the door? So we've got a follow-up item then around to confirm, to get everybody's satisfaction. But the implications are for the commercial zone. But that's known enough to stop going forward with mapping and approving that as it's been presented. So, okay, and we've asked Marcy to send the language that you're getting from the same folks to us, so I'm gonna add that as a third item if we need to still clarify and discuss it when we get together in our next work session. So that'll be three items for discussion as well as a review of the draft that's gonna come back with the changes we've talked about today.
And so what are the implications of that for the commercial zone? Will be something I'd be interested in.
Okay, well, we can discuss it once everybody's confident that that's.
Yes, right.
Think the the bigger implication is what Jerry's brought up, which is we may want to consider being more of a pure commercial zone rather than a mix of commerce and residence there, but that's for further discussion and doesn't relate to.
That's what I was hearing, yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's not for here.
Yeah, I I think it's a great idea.
Dying to pick up the gavel now.
Please.
So, hey, listen, I mean, it it's hard. You know, sporting analogies, it's hard to get that last hundred yards across the finish line, and that's about the time when a lot of people stumble. They lose their patience, they lose their sense of humor, please don't let that happen. And we miss details, so everybody stay very attentive. And I really appreciate that, even when things have got a little, I mean, we get hot about stuff, we're all, we all have our moments of that. But I really appreciate how council has stuck with it. I appreciate the fact that planning commissioners came and we had Karen, which your governor took a seat as far from us. Yeah, so um, and I really wanna thank Marcy and and Leila for continuing on this on this path. So it's it's taken a lot of help at one year, but in a lot of cases, when we get to the vote, we're gonna be very solid. And we're gonna be able to explain to anybody who comes up and says, why the heck did you vote for such and such, and we'll be grounded in that, and that's really important. In this, and then when planning commission members wanted to go on council someday, they can also. To their workload, yeah. Okay.
So adopt everything.
Yeah, on that friendly note, I'm gonna end this meeting and thank you everybody very much, it's six oh five.